Welcome to Market City Commission Agenda Monday, June the 10th, 2013. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join my fellow Commissioners and I in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Prota M. Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Uh, City Clerk, uh, there's five, uh, six of us present, and I'll need a motion by Commissioner to excuse Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Neme?
Thank Your Honor. I move that we excuse Commissioner Snyder as he's out of town.
Thank you, sir. Second, Commissioner, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Neme, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Coyne. Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Note of, uh, agenda changes. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
To pull, uh, item A off, the minutes of the May 28th, 2013 commission meeting, and also item O, the agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette.
You want to pull those and put them on the regular agenda, is that correct? Okay.
Did you want to put that on regular agenda?
Yes.
So that would be, uh, number 14, correct, City Clerk?
Two items.
14 and 15. Okay, thank you.
Not to, not to take anything off.
Thank Your Honor. I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the agenda. Uh, motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll have, uh, some announcements that I have to make. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee has three openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, one opening. Housing Commission, one opening. Local Officers Compensation. Commission has three openings. Planning Commission, two openings. Recreation, Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan. Ad-Hoc Committee has one alter, alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, three openings. Sustainable, uh, Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, two openings. One DNR rep and one Parks and Recreation Advisory Board rep. And Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, three openings. Thank you. With that, we'll move to, uh, public hearing, um, or adopt ordinance 603, amendment to section 2-501 and 2-502 of the Market City Code, effective July 1st, 2013. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background. A public hearing was scheduled for tonight to consider ordinance number 603. Section 10-1B of the city charter states the city shall, by ordinance, specify the dollar amounts for sales or purchases of property by the city for which, one, the sale or purchase shall be approved by the city commission, and, two, sealed bids shall be obtained unless the city commission, by unanimous resolution of those present at the meeting, based upon the written recommendation of the city manager, determines that no advantage to the city would result from competitive bidding. The city code currently states in section 2-501, purchases or contracts $3,000 or less, any expenditure for supplies, materials, or equipment, the cost of which is $1,000 or more but not greater than $3,000, may be made in the open market, but such purchases were practicable be, um, will be, uh, made in the open market, but such purchases shall, where practicable, be based on at least three verbal quotes and shall be awarded to the lowest and best supplier. A record shall be kept of all open market orders, and the, and the, uh, quotes submitted shall be available for public inspection and kept through the next audit cycle. The city reserves the right to reject any or all quotes, and section 2-502, purchases or contracts over $3,000. Any expenditure for supplies, materials, equipment, construction project, or contract obligating the city where the amount of the city's obligation is in excess of $3,000 shall be governed by the provisions of this section. It is proposed that these two sections be amended by ordinance number 603 attached. Excuse me, fiscal effect, no monetary effect, no change in commission role or authority. The change will allow city departments to be more efficient in procurement, procurement-related activities. Recommendation, following a public hearing, adopt ordinance number 603. An amendment to sections 2-501 and 2-502 of the Market City Code, effective July 1st, 2013. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. At this time, seeing that this is a public hearing, I'll open this portion to the public for any comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Please come up to the podium, state your name and physical address, please.
My name is Charlotte Key. Um, I'm from Florida, but I come to Marquette every summer because it's God's country. Anyway, um, I wanted to speak to the new business agenda.
Point of order.
Uh, 224 West Hewitt. Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I wanted to speak, um, to the, uh, new business, number 10, on the Music in the Park Agreement. Of course, as a person who just comes and is basically a tourist who enjoys Marquette, yes?
Ma'am?
Yes?
This is, uh, our agenda one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a public.
No, this is not public comment time. This is just for the purchase and contract dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Commissioners. Anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time on purchase and contract dollar trestles? Anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public comment. Commissioners, it's a pleasure. Commissioner Ryan?
Your Honor, I think it would be really helpful if, if someone would give us the simplified explanation of what this is, especially for the benefit of people watching or following this, because this is kind of legalese, and what, what we've done is in the past, I know we've, these, these items have been set in stone in the charter, and, and the Charter Commission made a good decision to take it out of the charter and, and make it that this could be updated from time to time by the commission. But I think specifically what these, what these, uh, limits mean would be helpful for the understanding of everybody.
City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me go ahead and ask our CFO to lead us through a little bit of the background and what the potential impact of this will be.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Actually, Commissioner Ryan explained it very well. These limits used to be set in the city charter, but now the city charter, uh, requires that we set these by ordinance now. Um, and basically, all we're doing is, like, for the title, we're changing the title for, from purchases or contracts $3,000 or less to purchase or contracts $25,000 or less. And what this means is that whereas before, anything over $3,000 required a formal RFP and required to come to the commission, this means that, the way we're going to word it, anything over $5,000 and between $25,000 will still come to the commission, it just doesn't require a formal RFP process, it just requires three, uh, informal quotes. Anything over $25,000 will require to go through the formal RFP process. So, really, we're just changing what has to go through the formal RFP process, and it will hopefully make, allow departments, particularly in public works, to spend a lot less time going through the formal RFP process, and actually just getting quotes and, uh, those items will still come before the commission, so you'll still have the opportunity to say yea or nay. So, that's basically it, so.
And this also, uh, sets some definite dates for the manager to make new recommendations as we go forward, I believe.
Uh, correct. That is, uh, every five years, it has to come back again in the year 2015, and then every five years thereafter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I move that we, uh, adopt ordinance number 603, an amendment to sections 2-501 and 2-502 of the Market City Code, effective July 1st, 2013.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
Well, just one further explanation. Commissioner, um, Kim Benzey and I served on the Charter Committee, and we, the committee did this because, uh, previously, uh, in the charter, it was a specific amount, and that was 60 years ago. And for those, you probably can figure out, a dollar 60 years ago was much more valuable than it is now. And the only way to change that figure was to amend the, the charter, which was an arduous process. And what we did, the committee did, was to, uh, change it so, uh, it's an ordinance, so it can be changed at any time, very simply by the act of the commission. And it's a, it's really, as described, a way of simplifying government, uh, and updating the amounts that, uh, it's just not appropriate to have 1960 limits in 2013, and so that's why it was done.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Coyne, and, um, certainly serving on the Charter Commission, we got to see, I guess, just how tedious this has become as we move into the 21st century. And just to kind of piggyback off, off of Commissioner Ryan's comments, I think it is good to allow the community to see that, um, you know, there's no monetary effect for this, and no changes in the commission's role or authority, but really, this is just updating, um, to the 21st century, I guess, standards, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioner with discussion on agenda number one? Seeing none? There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Kim Benzey, to accept a recommendation of agenda one, and following a public hearing, adopt ordinance number 603, amendment to section 2-501 and 2-502 of the Market City Code, effective July 1st, 2013. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll move to number two, public hearing. Following a public hearing, adopt ordinance number 602, zoning ordinance amendments regarding high-risk erosion area overlay zones. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background. The city of Marquette has received notification that properties previously designated in 1982 as being located in a high-risk erosion area, or HREA, have been de-designated pursuant to state law, part 323 Shorelands Protection and Management of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act of 1994, PA 451, as amended, and the Great Lakes Shorelands Administrative Rules. A recession rate updated study was conducted in 2012 and found the recession rates to be less than the statutory average of one foot per year over a period of 15 years needed for the designation. Therefore, the DEQ has eliminated the requirement for an HREA construction permit on the previously designated properties. Due to this notification, staff drafted amendments to the Market City zoning ordinance to remove sections addressing previous HREA by eliminating two relevant definitions from section 80.02 and eliminating section 80.19. Shoreline, uh, 80.19 shoreline erosion overlay. The Planning Commission conducted hearings regarding these proposed zoning ordinance amendments on May 7th, 2013, and made the following recommendations. Regarding section 80.02, it was moved by Clip, seconded by Roberts, and carried six to zero to recommend to the city commission approval of the amendments as presented. And regarding section 80.19, it was moved by Clip, seconded by Penglaze, and carried six to zero to recommend to the city commission approval of the amendments as presented. Fiscal effects, none. Recommendation, following a public hearing, adopt ordinance number 602, zoning ordinance amendments regarding high-risk erosion area overlay zones. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Seeing that this is a public hearing item, is there anyone wishing to address the city commission on zoning ordinance amendments regarding high-risk erosion area overlay zones? Is there anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Did you just suggest that this would be adopted before the supplement was even read or the public hearing held? Now, it certainly isn't the case with what Mr. Blue read, but it sounded that way from what you told us as we were leading into the item. First of all, there's no map in the agenda supplement that tells us where the overlay zones are. Not that you people seem to care whether the public has given the necessary information. The document mentions a map, but it's nowhere in the supplement. Although the intent of this hearing is difficult to follow on account of a limited time to research the provided information, it appears as if you're relaxing restrictions for building on or near slopes and near a lakeshore, rather than pursue slopes ordinances, which closely relate to erosion considerations. The supplement states that the recession rates are less than the statutory average of one foot per year over a period of 15 years needed for the designation. This should not give our commission, commissions a free ticket to delete the listed sections. In effect, you are encouraging the placement of structures in high areas of high-risk erosion, and you're encouraging permanent structures to be located between the high-water mark and the line defining the minimum setback distance, measured in the landward direction as distance horizontal from and perpendicular to the bluff line. Other than my addition of the word encouraging, this is the wording in the document. Please ask for clarification similar to your handling of item one. You're obviously attempting to eliminate stipulations that pertain to our bluffs as well as to our shorelines, which, based on this commission's historic behavior, lead the informed public to fear what free ticket this might offer to developers. Regardless, this item falls in line with the commission's ongoing behavior to completely overlook the effects of erosion regardless of the sensitivity of the sites in question.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public hearing. And Commissioners, it's a pleasure. Commissioners? Is there a motion on agenda number two? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to adopt ordinance number 602, zoning ordinance, uh, amendments regarding high-risk erosion area overlay zones.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, as I think is explained within the addendum, it is simply a procedural element as requested by the DEQ, or DNR, rather.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, really, this is something that grew out of, uh, communications from the state, and, uh, we're really just following their lead, as far as I'm concerned. We, um, we have not allowed any building on the shoreline that we control, and we control most of the shoreline, so it's highly unlikely this is going to change any of our building plans in the future. But, uh, you know, it, it allows us to follow up on a recommendation that was made to us by the controlling state agency.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner wanting, uh, to discuss agenda number two? Seeing none? There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept a recommendation of agenda number two, and following a public hearing, adopt ordinance number 602, zoning ordinance amendments regarding high-risk erosion area overlay zones. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to number three, presentation, board of review, by board member Walter Anderson.
Walter Anderson, member of Board of Review, I feel like I should say, 430 Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette. I will be doing the presentation for the Board of Review report of the, or to the city commission for the June 10th, uh, 2013 meeting. The background, our board is made up of five members. Mike McCarty is the chairperson. Liz Grill is the secretary. I myself am on the board. Our two new members, um, are Dave Brooks and Carolyn Craig. Our Susan Bovine is our city assessor. Alan Britton is our city appraiser, and Amanda Forsland is our assisting, our assessing assistant. Five meetings scheduled for 2013, with the last meeting being held in December, on December 10th of this year. The purpose and goals, um, established pursuant to the city charter, section 8-4, which parallels requirements set forth in MCL, section, uh, 211.29. The board hears appeals on property assessment. Our March Board meeting, uh, our March Board of Review is specific to property owners protesting valuations and classifications. We meet for two whole days in March. One, all day long, and then the next day in the afternoon and evening, so all city residents have at least an opportunity to come to the board with any concerns they might have concerning their, uh, valuations and classifications of their property. July and December boards of review are specific to corrections of clerical errors, mutual mistakes of fact, and principal resident exemption appeals. And then all boards of review can consider poverty exemptions. The, uh, 2013 property tax, uh, appeal procedures are as follows. The types of appeals, we can deal with several, uh, different things, but we can only do them on certain times and dates. Um, the Board of Review, as you see, looking at the top, um, in 2013, the assessed values and/or tentative taxable values, we look at those in March. The, um, property exemptions under MCL 2011.7U, we can do those in March and in July and December. And the assessment classifications, we can deal with those in March. The other things are dealt with by the Treasury, the Tax Commission, and the tribunal. You can see that there's, uh, no review, some things will go directly to the tribunal if we don't handle them at the Board of Review level. Then, this is continuation of that same thing. Um, you'll notice that, uh, the second one down, principal residence exemptions, which was not on the 2010, 11, 12, and/or the 13 tax roll, we can deal with those in July and/or December. And you can see there's, um, the Treasury and the Tax Commission, and the Tax Tribunal have some authority and sometimes they don't. So, it's a very lockstep process that we are part of. Boards of review dates are, uh, July 16th and December 16th, the ones that are left for this year. Components of the taxable values, there are, uh, 705,988,531 total. It's kind of interesting that 6% are personal property, and that's roughly 45 million. Residential properties make up 50%, and that is, uh, 356 million. Commercial properties make up 28%, and they're 194 million. And the industrial portion is 16%, and they make up roughly 110 million. Now, the commercial properties, we have recently, um, had Market General Hospital added into this, so this is a true figure with Market General in there, and that's approximately $51 million for Market General. Then, components of assessed value, um, this is, if you will, the true cash value of the property, so you'll notice there is a difference here, because the longer person has a property, because of the way headly works and so forth, there will be a discrepancy between the, um, true cash value and the taxable. So, uh, personal property is roughly 45 million. Again, residential, it's gone up, it's 441 million here. Uh, commercial is 219 million, and the industrial is 110 million, round figure speaking. Then, parcel count by classes. There are 7,403 total parcels. Personal property makes up 1,392 parcels. Residential makes up 72% or 5,371 parcels, and commercial makes up 8.5%, which is 629 parcels, with industrial making up .15%. Notice, not 15%, but .15%, and there are 11 parcels. It's interesting, when you look back, the industrial, though, there's good money because of industrial for the, uh, taxation of Marquette, and the industrial is at 110 million. So, we don't have much industrial, but they, you know, do have a fair share of the tax Exempt parcels, there are 387 parcels that are exempt in Marquette. Nonprofit education makes up a part of it, roughly 1 and 1/2%. Religious makes up about 12 and 1/2%. Personal property makes up roughly 10%. Other real makes up roughly 10%. Public schools and colleges make up 16 and 1/2%. County or city makes up 40, uh, almost 41%. The state has roughly 8%, and the federal roughly 1% are exempt. Then, the March Board of Review petitions, and I'm going to start at the bottom and work towards the top here. You'll notice in 2008, there were 91 petitions presented to the Board of Review. In 200- In 2009, there were 154 petitions to the Board of Review. And people might wonder, wow, that's a big jump in one year. Well, you might think back a little bit. In 2009, our rate of inflation was 4.4%, so that is what your tax base was raised by, so that upset people. And consequently, they come to the Board of Review because they're seeing something they don't like. But then, you look at in 2010, it went way down to 51 petitions. And in 2010, the Consumer Price Index was less than 1%. It was .997. So, that people weren't upset with. Because it's kind of ironic in the fact that the harder you're getting hit economically, the higher your taxes go up, so you get a double whammy, so that does upset people. That's why they do have the right and the ability to come to the Board of Review regarding their property. In 2011, we saw 79 petitions. In 2012, we saw 64 petitions. And this year, in 2013, we saw 68 petitions. The relationship of the Board of Review. The board acts as the jury between the assessor and the taxpayer. If the Board of Review acts in a responsible manner, using a fair measure of common sense, unnecessary trips to the Michigan Tax Tribunal can be avoided, thereby saving the city money. So, basically, you can look at it as a teeter totter. It's the assessor and the taxpayer, and the Board of Review is the balance between the two. Then, the general information. Annual education, attendance of Board of Review schools. There were three members that attended in 2013. A few of us traveled to Red Yard for that. They're held around different places around the UP. And they are very beneficial to us. We learn a lot of information that is significant, and so it really does pay to go to those, the meetings. We have, may have a few in number, but workload can be very heavy, depending on the year. Personal property. Now, this is kind of the big question mark in the sky right now for the city and the state as a whole. Personal property, several acts have passed which will have a bearing on the taxation of personal property, some of which are contingent on the August regular election date in 2014, so that's over a year away. And it could have a significant impact, that personal property could disappear. As far as a taxable thing, will something replace it? Maybe, maybe not. We don't know. But, we won't know for another year, but it will have some sort of an impact on the city and all communities. Some interesting things. Duplexes, the last two years have seen suppressed sales resulting in reduction in values. So, duplexes that used to be looked at as, you know, valued rental property aren't what they used to be in Marquette. And then, mortgages. Property owners have experienced situations where they owe more on the home than it is worth, commonly known as underwater mortgages. We are seeing those in Marquette. So, it's a situation that we don't have control over. It's what people paid for their houses and what they borrowed on them. So, it's a, it's a real fact that residents in Marquette are dealing with, some residents. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Walter Anderson? Commissioner Ryan?
Not a question, just a comment, you know, to thank the Board of Review for the work it does. It's, it's, it's a difficult task, I know. And you say you serve as the jury, but I think you really serve as kind of a safety valve for the public, you know, as it looks at property values. But you also represent the city. And as you point out, if you do your job well, everybody, you know, it doesn't go any further, so I think that's a good thing. So, I really do appreciate the work that the Board of Review does, and I know they take it very seriously.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Coy?
Well, I would just echo those, and also compliment you on a very clear presentation that was very understandable for a complex issue. Thank you, Walter.
Commissioner Cavendish?
I'd like to echo my fellow commissioners and just say that it was a wonderful presentation. I like the data. It was easy to follow, very specific. I have one question. The exempt parcels, I think it was 387 that Marquette has. Is this a higher number than most? I mean, where, I always hear people say, oh, we have so many non-taxable parcels. I mean, do you have any idea where we sit?
Not a clue. I really don't know. Compared to other communities, we probably have more because we have a few more, you know, state things that go on in Marquette, and we are the county seat, if you will. So, there's a few things, probably, that, you know, Ishbin Nagani-Gwynn wouldn't have. But I don't think we're out of proportion with other county seats or like Escanaba, whatever, where they would have, you know, a few more, you know, federal and state things. One of the things, I guess, is the prison. I'm thinking of, that's, you know, kind of a major one. So, if you have a prison in your area, you probably have more. Those are the only things I can think of.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thanks to staff, because I know you do put a lot of hours in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, Walter, thank you for everything you do and for everything the board does. Deeply appreciated. And especially for the presentation, I think was very valuable to everybody in the audience, particularly out in television land, to see exactly, kind of pull the shades back a little bit on the Board of Review. A question, however, I know Market Township is having significant difficulty with their big box stores and the appeals from those. Do you see that impacting into the city at all? Or any?
You know, and I think one real reason is because of what the city did with the hospital, having a, you know, assessment of that property. If you do things like that, you're going to eliminate the problem before it is a problem, because we had a good group come in and look at it and appraise it honestly and fairly, I think. And so, there's really nothing that could come back to the Board of Review or the city, because it was fair and honest. You know, and the right people did it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner? Seeing none? Mr. Walter Anderson, out of the 68 appeal people that had filed, how many did you help out?
We helped out, probably, I'll say, 60 of the 68. Maybe a couple more than that. There weren't many that we couldn't help out. And there's some you honestly can't, just because of what their real property value is.
No, but I know that you people had looked at everything very close over all the years, and you do, you and the staff do an excellent job of listening to everybody, so some walk away pretty happy, and some don't.
Most, I think, are satisfied with what they get.
The majority does feel very good about attending this and talking to yous about it, so.
We try to make the people feel comfortable. We don't intimidate. We listen, and they appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for doing what you're doing, and the other board members. Thank you again. And with that, we'll move to Number Four, Presentation, Market Housing Commission by Chair Dottie LaJoy.
Thank you. I'm Dottie LaJoy. I'm the president of the Housing Commission, and thank you for allowing us to give this presentation. We were founded in 1966. We are chartered under the laws of the state of Michigan to provide and administer affordable housing to the citizens of the city of Marquette. We provide 254 units of public housing within the city limits, and we also provide a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Our mission statement is really long, but it is to provide safe, sanitary, affordable housing to low and moderate income individuals and families, and to promote personal responsibility and self-sufficiency to residents while maintaining fiscal integrity, also to provide adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and a suitable living environment free from discrimination. The board meeting is held on the fourth Tuesday of every month. Can everybody see that? In Pine Ridge apartment, or at the Pine Ridge Apartment Facility at 316 Pine Street in Marquette. And the minutes are available on our website, which is mqthc.org. We are a five-member governing board. We do have one vacancy, and hopefully, we'll get that filled soon. And we are appointed by the City Commission. We have a wonderful cross-section of individuals that are on our board. We have everyone from a young student that lives at Lake Superior Village to a young professional or private sector employee. We also have the public sector, myself, and a retired professional. So, we're, we're, everybody is well represented. Our executive director is Sharon Kivico, and Heidi Rosenberg is our executive assistant and also runs the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We have Deborah Mackey and Jacini Bennett as our occupancy specialists for the two facilities, both Pine Ridge and Lake Superior Village. David Wiegand is our maintenance administrator. Lloyd Dupress, Jeff Harry, Randy Lavillier, and Chris Clark are the maintenance mechanics. We are federally funded by HUD, Housing, Urban and Development, and we also receive income from tenant rent and repair charges, rooftop antenna rentals, and there's no cost to the city of Marquette. However, our budget has been cut because of the 2013 sequestration, and it's now 84% of what it was previously. A little bit about Pine Ridge. Here, we are, of course, located on the east side of the city. Most people know this building. It has 140 units. The tenants are elderly, disabled, and low-income. They pay 30% of the adjusted gross income for their rent with a $50 minimum charge for utilities such as gas, electric, water, and sewer. Cable and telephone are not included in that rate. There's various amenities. We have a secure building, free parking, library with computers and free internet access, 24-hour emergency maintenance, onsite Marktran bus stop with shelter, community room that's now air-conditioned, outdoor seating area, onsite laundry, and small pets are allowed. They also have a beautiful view of Lake Superior. Lake Superior Village, this is family-based housing. These, there's 114 townhouses. Same-income guidelines are, apply as Pine Ridge. Two, three, and four-bedroom units, 24-hour emergency maintenance, pretty much the same thing. The laundry hookups are in every unit. It's not a separate facility. The patio areas, yard areas. We have a youth center that is awesome. It provides great things for young children, after-school program, and then also a summer program. And that, and we're really happy to have that. It, it really helps all the young children in that area, because that area is really sort of closed off by the streets. You have Wright Street, and then you have Prescott Avenue. So, you really kind of have this isolated population. So, the fact that we have these services to that community is very valuable. Gives the children opportunity to, you know, become entertained in healthy activities. This is a picture of the youth center. These are some capital improvements that happened over the last year. We did a, we completed stage one of the STACK project. Also, I should say, too, that our capital, our capital budget has not been approved yet by HUD. We really don't know what that's going to be. So, this project was supposed to go on for the next three years, but we may have to go a little bit slower with that. But you'll see what phase one. Through that process, we were able to convert five one-bedroom and one-two-bedroom apartments into ADA-compliant units. We installed air conditioning in the community room. And then, because our executive director is a licensed social worker, we were able to take advantage of the social work intern program through Northern Michigan University, and provided a social worker to assist our tenants with the various services at both locations. At Lake Superior Village, we removed trees and that were damaging sidewalks, and then we improved the sidewalks. We had hail damage to 34 roofs. 12 roots have been completed, and there are still 22 more to go. And at both facilities, we have maintained 98% occupancy. This is our STACK project. It's just beautiful. We've replaced the main sewer line throughout the building and replaced wastewater lines in 48 apartments. We installed new kitchen cabinets and floating kitchen floors. And that is to, I'm, I think, noise? Is that why you'd have a floating floor? Reduces the noise and vibrations?
It was less expensive than the whole renovation.
Oh, okay. Well, good. Win-win. That's good. Okay. And then, of course, we converted the five-one-bedroom and one-two-bedroom apartments to accessible apartments. And here's what they look like. We're really proud of these. These have low counters that folks are, that are in wheelchairs they can roll up to. This is the, I think, the single bedroom. This is a little before and after. You can see how difficult that probably would have been for a person either in a walker or wheelchair to be able to get into that bathroom. Now, they can wheel right in. This is our, our two-bedroom apartment. They can roll up to that counter, sit down, have a nice dinner. It's nice amenities. This is our community room, another really nice amenity that we offer, and now it's air-conditioned. Last, last summer, of course, it was very, very hot, and a lot of the folks came and just asked the board to put in air conditioning, please. To do that, we had to put in these beautiful doors. And so, now, they can, they can sit in that room and be comfortable. This is our waitlist. We have 76 applicants on the waitlist. Preference points are that they are residents of the city of Marquette. They are working, or disabled or elderly, and students or higher-income people result in rent that is higher than $195 a month. And there's a six-to-12-month anticipated wait time. Lake Superior Village has a lot of folks waiting for the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom, which makes sense, because these are young families. And wait time goes out months, years, depending on availability. We, we also do the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program, and that is rental assistance on, at privately-owned housing. This gives families more freedom in where they can live. They get to choose where, where that works best for them. The units that they rent have to pass a housing quality standard, which is a real basic standard. It's not a code, but it is a, is a standard that includes things like smoke detectors, railings by stairs. What are some other ones? Hot and cold running water, a flushable toilet. Those kinds of things. So, real basic, but it makes sure that everybody's living in a, in a relatively healthy environment. They can be located anywhere in Marquette County. It also allows households to receive rental assistance. Okay, that works best for them. And that voucher is actually portable, so they can rent here, and then, if they need to move outside of Marquette County, they can take that voucher with them. The family pays approximately 30% of the adjusted gross monthly, of their adjusted gross monthly income for rent, and then the Housing Choice Voucher Program pays the rest. And that is called the Housing Assistance Payment, or the HAP. That's how that works. And we are currently assisting 43 families. Unless exempt each adult family member, and this is for both, both facilities, both Pine Ridge and for Lake Superior Village, they have to contribute eight hours per month of community service, not including political service, and, or they participate in an economic self-sufficiency program. If anyone wants to apply, this is the information for application. You can stop in at Pine Ridge or Lake Superior Village, or you can receive an application online. However, the Housing Choice Voucher Program is closed right now. Not accepting applications, because there's such a backlog of applications already. Does anyone have any questions?
Dottie, before I turn discussion over to my fellow commissioners for questions, is the director here?
Yes.
Could you have her come up and introduce her?
Absolutely.
And commissioners may have some questions for her also, so.
Sharon Kivico, our executive director.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
You had mentioned being affected by the sequester program. How does that affect you? What, what, you obviously have to pay for your operating costs and maintenance costs. What do you do? What do you do to, to offset those losses, either of you?
Right now, we are...
Could you stand next to the mic, please, so it'll go on record?
As Dottie was saying, we have not received any notification on our capital improvement funds, and that is the money that we utilize to do things like the STACK project, which is replacing the waste piping. As far as our operating funds go, which are day-to-day operating-type things, we have been receiving notification of what we would receive in one-to-two-month chunks at a time. Right now, I know what I'll be receiving for June, July, and August. So, it's been a real, it's been a real tough year trying to budget and go forward. Basically, what we're doing is we're trying to be as lean as we can without cutting staff or services to the tenants. Unfortunately, we do have a little bit of reserves that we're able to dip into to help us out right now.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing, Commissioner Ryan?
Like we love the other group and not you, because I really do think you do an outstanding job of serving many members in our community and providing a really valuable service. And certainly, to those people who have to, who are able to take advantage of those services, it's, you know, it's life-saving to them, I'm sure. So, certainly, congratulations to the, to the board for their work and to the director for keeping this program running efficiently in Marquette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I also would like to thank both the youth, the chair, and also the committee, and the director. I know it's not boring with those operations such as that, and trying to get revenue sharing from the federal and the state and that. So, keep up the good work, and we thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, recognition of outgoing members. Perry Lang, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, could you meet me up there, please? Tim Melko, Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, could you also meet me up there? Could you just come in here a little bit, so you'll be on camera. For Perry Lang, certificate of appreciation presented to Perry Lang for volunteer effort on the Park and, Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And we appreciate it very much that you had served on there.
Thank you.
We have a shirt with the city logo, and we have a city pin, and you know where the applications are at City Hall for the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and an honor. Unfortunately...
Could you step up here a little bit, please?
The reason that I am not on the committee any longer is that I moved out to Chautauqua Township. So, you folks won't let me serve for you anymore. But I would have if I could have. So, I appreciate the work. It's been an honor and a privilege to, to help the city make decisions for the parking committee, as well as the years that I spent on the Marina Harbor Committee as well. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much. Also, Chalkley has committees also, so.
Oh, I've never heard that.
Yeah. Wait right up here, Perry. I just want to present Tim with his certificate of appreciation presented to Tim Melko for volunteer effort on Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving, serving the citizens of this community. And we really appreciated all your hard work with that. And with that, we'll give you a T-shirt with the city logo, city pin.
Perfect.
And you also know where the City House, where the applications are as soon as you get bored, and you find some free time, come on back. And we appreciate it. When you move back to City of Marquette, you know where to come to. Thank you very much again, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, could I have Scott Combenzi? He's superintendent of Public Works.
I was gonna say, away without this one.
No, we had you on the radar. But anyways, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Scott Combenzi. He's superintendent of Public Works, in charge of the water sewer, the parking rackets, in charge of the street maintenance, the plowing, a lot of the cemetery. And Scott has got his 10 years of service to the City of Marquette. We want to thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And we thank you very much, Scott, and we appreciate it. Thank you again. Do you want to say something else to?
Not yet.
Okay. Scott doesn't want to say anything further, so return to your chair. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to public comment.
Reappointment.
Oh, reappointment. Did I, oh, yes. Gary. Oh, did he take off? Oh, okay. I thought he was still sitting here. Okay. Commissioners, reappointment. City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, there's one reappointment this evening of Gary Simpson to the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board as an alternate with a term ending 6/1/2016.
Thank you. Motion to reappoint. Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint Gary Simpson, an alternate to the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, for a term ending June 1st, 2016.
Thank you very much. Second, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the appointment.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Naimi, anything further?
I just thank Gary who's willing to serve the city on our behalf, and this is an important board, and I think he's probably a good choice because he's our chief financial officer, so he can keep the board apprised of what's happening financially.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Is there anyone wishing to address the City Commission at this time?
Hi, I'm Carol Fallsure. I live at 916 High Street, and I'm also the administrator for the Ironor Heritage Recreation Authority, and we're item number 12 tonight. So, I'm here in case you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Yes, Mayor. I would reserve time if you have questions for me on item number seven, and then would also like to speak on item number, I believe it's 15 now, the YMCA.
Number 15.
Is that what it is now? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Bochamp. I live at 328 Harrison Street, and I would like to reserve time to speak on item number 10.
Okay, very good.
I'm Cheryl Wadby, 465 Blum Huber in Marquette. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item 15, the amendment to the YMCA of Marquette.
Could I have your last name, please? I missed that.
Wadby, W-A-U-D-B-Y.
W-A-U-D-Y? B-Y, okay.
I just wanted to say again, my name is Charlotte King, and I'm at 224 West Hewitt. And I just wanted to comment on the Music in the Park series, and I heard that there was going to be some discussion about whether or not to continue that series. The first thing I do when I get to Marquette is to check the Marquette Monthly, the newspaper, and to go by the, I guess it's the Welcome Center out on 41 on the bike path. And when I couldn't find any information on the Music in the Park this year, I was kind of disturbed because that's one of the main things I like to do here when I come in the summers. And so, they were nice enough to pull up something for me on the Internet, and then when I saw that there was a possibility of it not being continued, I decided to come and just say that I think it's a great opportunity for some of the local talent to be able to showcase their talent and have an opportunity to be exposed to people. And, and it's also great for both tourists and the locals alike to be able to go to your beautiful Prescott Park, which I just love. I go there almost every day so that I can get to enjoy the music that everybody else gets to go to free. It's wonderful, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time?
Hi, I'm Don Grisham at 903 Wilson Street. I'd like to reserve time to comment on item number 15 regarding the YMCA.
How do you say your last name?
Grisham, G-R-I-S-H-A-M.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Travis Hungesto, 501 Center Street. I'd like to reserve time on the item number 15 as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time?
My name is Pete Beal at 340 East Ridge Street, and I'd like to reserve time for number 15 also.
How do you say your last name?
Beal, B-E-A-L-E.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time?
These are my opinions. May 28th, on the senior center, Mr. Ryan wanted the emphasis on, quote, "What the seniors want, not on some grand and glorious palace that people may or may not go to," end quote. Making it glorious is what will bring us there, as we've seen with the library. Our senior center ought to be grand, although not necessarily in terms of extravagance. Our seniors deserve a palace, and we all deserve an adjoining community center that will unite people of all ages. Let us seek grant funding in a central location. May 28th, Mr. DePietro asked the new appointments to step forward to be seen on TV, which was a farce because your cheap cameras depict us as flashes of light. I've been told to wear a dark shirt to reduce this awful glare. What a waste of money this chamber renovation was for lesser quality than before. The media sets up by the southwest door with tripod legs extended, which poses a safety hazard should the room require evacuation, but no one seems to care that this practice is not recommended. To worsen matters, the audience now sits near the south wall, whereas we used to sit at the west end, affording shorter and safer evacuation. You could correct the situation by building a vestibule against the south wall and by adding one or two south entrances. As is the case with picnic rocks and pedestrian safety, this board doesn't think in safe-enough terms. Another matter is you're not moving items up on the agenda. When questioned earlier, you told me of a time when you did move the item up, but that's more the exception than the rule. If you're not going to move your items up, please explain your discretion. It's amazing how many times the attorney needed to interject on May 28th to bail you out. In truth, you add entertainment value to the meetings, resulting in our occasional laughs of disbelief. You're commended for that quality, aside from your meetings being a trip to Comedy Central. Only one person commented on the budget on May 28th, a man whose cause benefited from an allocation. One out of 21,000 bothered to invest the time, which indicates our residents' interests. Most of us want to live laid-back lives without watching you overrun us with big money, even if not as badly as most places. Big money leads to diminished green space, lower quality of life, higher crime rates, and no more free mooring for boats. The impetus behind you is locally driven, consisting of often well-meaning, lifelong residents who have no conception of what a unique lifestyle we stand to lose. Some people aren't setting their boats in this summer because of the escalated slip rates. Mr. Coyne once spoke of how friendly people are on the street. It's still true, but not like 20 years ago. And he's one of the main players who threatened to throw that priceless attribute by the wayside. Marquette is changing, like I've warned you for years it would. What's sad is how the public sits back, letting it happen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. You're in Malankin Nate, Marquette Drive. On a more happier note, with the pleasant things that are happening in our community, I want to thank the mayor and the city manager. They did a presentation at Rotary this noon, and it was quite pleasant and interesting and entertaining on city politics, and Mr. Mayor made it, China made it really entertaining and enjoyable to listen to. As far as the consent agenda, I want to just pre-thank the commission on awarding the permits and all the other things that we need for the upcoming Fourth of July fireworks. Those are going to be much, much larger than years past. The citizens of this community are going to be very pleasantly surprised on the quantity and the amount and the loudness and displacement of the fireworks this year. Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public. Move to number six, consent agenda. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we're going to begin with item B and conclude with item N this evening. Approve the total bills payable in the amount of $495,613.99. Item C, approve the payment of the invoice to the Board of Light and Power in the amount of $6,448.61 for the rebuilding of the traffic signal systems at the intersections of Lincoln Avenue and Fair Avenue and the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and College Avenue. Item D, approve the PUD agreement with the Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast at 975 Lakeshore Boulevard and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Item E, schedule a public hearing for June 24, 2013 to consider ordinance number 604, an ordinance governing request to waive or discount city fees. Item F, approve the fireworks permit for the Marquette Fourth of July celebration. Item G, award the bid in an amount not to exceed $11,200 for Prescott Building Maintenance to U.P. Painters Incorporated of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Item H, award the bid in the amount not to exceed $58,055 at the unit prices bid for furnishing hot-mix asphalt and CP7 coal patch materials, Paint and Dole and Incorporated of Gladstone, Michigan, being the sole bidder meeting specifications. Item I, award the bid in an amount not to exceed $16,883 for municipal service center door replacement to Primo Construction of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Item J, award the bid in amount not to exceed $10,000 at unit prices bid for supplying topsoil to Associated Constructors LLC of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Item K, award the bid for liquid calcium chloride to, in an amount not to exceed $10,000 at unit prices bid to liquid calcium chloride sales of Collin, Michigan, being the sole bidder meeting specifications. Item L, award the bid in amount not to exceed $27,600 at unit prices bid for supplying concrete to Associated Constructors LLC of Marquette, Michigan, being the low bid meeting specification. Item M, award a bid in amount not to exceed $2,268 at unit prices bid for garbage can liners to Unipac Corp. of Brooklyn, New York, being the low bid meeting specifications. And item N, award a contract for sidewalk repair, replacement, and extension to Arrow Construction in the amount of $70,945.25 at the unit prices bid.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, commissioner's motion is in order to approve the consent agenda with the exception of a reimbursement to... of a reimbursement to Commissioner Stonehouse. All present commissioners will vote on the motion to approve this consent agenda.
Sir, motion?
Yes, I'm going there. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of the check 55702 to Commissioner Stonehouse.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne? Anything further, Commissioner Neamy?
No, that's all, Your Honor.
Anything further, Commissioner Coyne?
Yes, I have a question for the attorney. Is it necessary to read the entire consent agenda? Is a motion just to say, "I move we approve the consent agenda"? I mean, it's written, everybody has access to it on the Internet. Why do you have to read it?
I don't know that we have to read it. It's been the practice to read it since I've been here, but I don't think there's any requirement that it be read. It's just approve the consent agenda as presented. It is, as you say, it's on the web, it's wherever we publish it and location, so...
So in the future, if somebody, if the mayor... Excuse me. In the future, if the mayor asks, "Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda prior to asking the clerk to read it?", that would be not in violation of Robert's Rules of Order or anything?
No.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Neamy, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners, a motion, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the expense payment in the amount of $30 to Commissioner Stonehouse for reimbursement of travel at the city business.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Coyne, anything further? Any other commissioner? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to reimburse Commissioner Stonehouse for travel expenses in amount of $30. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes five to zero. Pardon?
Stonehouse, please.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Let the record show Commissioner Stonehouse abstaining on this motion. Thank you. Yeah, I can do that, okay. At this time, I'll move agenda item number 15 up at this time. There's some people that would like to discuss this, so City Clerk, number 15.
Yes, Your Honor. That is, the subject is the YMCA addendum to the lease agreement. And the background is as follows. The city of Marquette entered into a lease agreement with the YMCA of Marquette County dated September 8, 1998, and commencing January 1 of 1998 for a term of 45 years with an addendum entered on September 29 of 2008. The YMCA of Marquette has been approved to receive a 35-year, $2.99 million loan from the US Rural Development, whereas the loan requires the YMCA to have a lease for the property five years beyond the loan term. The YMCA of Marquette County is requesting to extend its lease for an additional 10 years, expiring December 31, 2052. Fiscal effect, no change in the fiscal effect from previous years. Recommendation, consider a lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette County through December 31, 2052, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney?
Your Honor, if I could just point out one thing. The lease is being introduced tonight. No action can be taken to adopt it, reject it, do anything. It's just a matter of introducing it under a new charter. We have to introduce it first and at a subsequent meeting take action on it. So just to make that clear to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Conbancy?
I'd like to ask the mayor to suspend the rules so we can have a dialogue discussion about this item.
Point of order, Your Honor. I think we have public comment that feeds any discussion.
Right. At this time, number 15 YMCA will open to public comment. Lisa Kumsdrew, did you want to lead off?
Lisa Kumsdrew, I am the CEO of the YMCA of Marquette County, and I have submitted to you a packet of information with the history of how the YMCA started, the number of folks that we are serving in our community, and the type of work that we are currently providing throughout the city. We have a number of folks who are city residents. 3,647 of our members are city residents. And the information that I provide you, we have 728 members aged 55 and above who live within literally five minutes of the Y. So we are providing service, and in order to move ahead with the USDA expansion, which has been approved for us, we do require an additional time on our lease. That is a requirement from the USDA and the federal government. It's not something that we can control, so we've requested that of the City Commission at this time. And I will be available for any other questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lawby?
I am a board member for the YMCA and also a member of the Y. I was actually a member of the Y before I became a board member. I just want to point out a few documents that are in your packets. And the first one is our, what we call our statement of work, and we look at this at our board meetings routinely. It notes the areas that the YMCA affects in Marquette County, in the areas of youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. I mean, if you look through this document, it shows our effect on different groups in the community. You see words of youth, teen, adult, family. It also affects, as you've seen in another document in your packet that Lisa referred to, the diversity and the different ages of members of our YMCA. We did, through this whole process and getting this grant, have a community forum or a membership meeting. And I just want to let you know how exciting that meeting was to take, invite members to come into our Y facility and let them dream about what our Y could expand to and have an input into the planning process. You also see a document in your packet of what the expansion would look like. It was very exciting to be a part of that, to see people see that we are trying to meet their needs in the community and what that future could look like. So I will also be here to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And Mr. Grisham?
I'm Don Grisham at 903 Wilson Street again. And I come to you as the chairman of the board of the YMCA in Marquette. And really, I haven't got any specific numbers or facts to put out in front of you, but rather just to simply ask you for the support of the YMCA in Marquette. You may recall, quite a few years ago, there was a need and a gathering of citizens that came to the conclusion that there needed to be a place in the city of Marquette where children, adolescents, people that needed a place to go to be able to exercise, to be able to use up their energy in a positive way. And what came out of that was the current YMCA facility. It has grown beyond our capacity. We are, we were blessed when it came, that the opportunity came to that we could borrow money from the United States Rural Development Agency at such an attractive interest rate. The need has always been there and has been growing every year for this expansion. I'm sure other people here can tell you any of the details of our expansion, but every square foot that we have been asking to renovate or expand is certainly needed in terms of meeting our goals of the YMCA, not only on the local level, but on the state and regional level, which is healthy living, youth development, and social responsibility. Now, you know, in this community, in our wonderful community of Marquette, you know, we're blessed to have a lot of agencies that look out for people. You heard tonight the Lake Superior Village report, where the YMCA has a center there where we help the children be able to give them not only a place to exercise and be fit, but also for proper nutrition and other support. The YMCA is one of those quiet agencies that has been around for a long time. It grew out of a need to have a facility for fitness, for youth development, for helping people get fit. And we're a nonprofit agency. We don't look to funds from the city or the state or nation. We get our funds from membership dues and from grants. And so we quietly go about our business. And so we're just asking tonight for support from all of you for this amendment so that we can continue to do the good work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hungestow?
Travis Hungestow again. Personally involved with the project. It's a very exciting project, right from the beginning of the grant paperwork and everything, and just exciting to be working on in general, but also as a citizen and seeing the great programs that they run through the YMCA. The expansion is greatly needed. I know that they, there's many other opportunities that I think they lose members because of the fact that it's so busy at times at lunch break and that sort of thing. I go on lunch myself. But the, with the additional gym to bring in some youth tournaments, basketball tournaments, volleyball, that sort of thing, there's a, it's just a great opportunity for the community, not only from the, those activities for the kids and youth, but also bringing people in from outside of the area for hotels, bringing them into the restaurants. And just as a father of an eight-month-old, my daughter just graduated as a shrimp last weekend or two weekends ago from the swimming class, so. So it's, the programs are unbelievable, and just seeing what we have to look forward to as my wife and I as parents, to continue the success of the YMCA would be a great thing for the area, so, thank you.
Thank you. And there was one more, Mr. Beatty?
Thank you very much. I've been a member of the Y since February of 2011. I entered the Y on their Live Strong program. I had had prostate cancer determined back in July of 2010, and after nine weeks of radiation, and also determined I had curvature of the spine and had about the same period of time of physical therapy. Purpose of the Live Strong program is to take previous cancer patients and teach them through the various efforts of the instructors, strength training, balance, stretching, and various other types of physical training. But not only did physical training result as part of the Live Strong program and the benefit that the instructors brought to us, but a certain emotional and spirit decor because all of the members of that initial program were cancer survivors. After the 12-week program, I decided to join the Y and keep on with the physical part of it, working on the various machines, never realizing all the types of terrific programs they have. If you walk through the Y, you'll see the gymnasium, you'll see where they take care of childcare, babies of the members, you'll see all the strength machines. What you don't see is the tremendous programs they have, which I've started to take participation in, yoga, Strong Bodies, I don't really appear that way, but I am participating in weightlifting, various weights, Aqua Zumba, which is a lot of fun, and Aqua Aerobics, which is a tremendous type of program, working with physical strength in the pool there at the Y. So as a two-year member, I certainly do recommend this type of program that they're coming up with, with this loan that they've been benefited with. So anything consideration you can give to the extension of this lease certainly would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conbancy?
Well, since I pulled it off the agenda, I guess I'll start. And I just want to say that I'm not pulling it off the agenda to certainly stand in the way of the grant or not commend you for all the goods you do. But part of my job sitting up here is to look at the contract, which another 45 years is a long time. I mean, I think a lot of us in this room, including myself, might not be here. And contracts like this, it was a considerable topic we discussed on the Charter Commission because what does it do to future generations? In this situation, I think it's a wonderful thing, but it also brought up, you know, some of the facts that, as we went through the budget session, what are we subsidizing at Lakeview? We have $400,000 worth subsidizing. And I'd like to ask staff, what does that mean? Is it snow plowing? Is it, are there things like that? I saw in the contract, HVAC repair will be maintained now by the city. At one time, it was a joint maintenance thing. I mean, these tough questions, these financial questions, I guess before, you know, we look at another contract, I want to make sure city staff says, you know, to us, yes, this is a good contract. We feel that we want to push it forward. Because I see some things in here that, you know, other community members have brought to my attention. And I guess, what are the costs right now that, I guess, come to mind if I could ask our city manager?
Thank you. This lease as we're proposing really doesn't change any of the existing costs or any of the existing budget from what's been proposed in the past. So I think we covered a lot of that information during budget session. We can certainly pull that out and provide it again as part of the lease. But we're, at this point, proposing status quo moving forward. And I'll have Carl maybe speak to what might be some of the last-minute discussion going on with Lisa in terms of the final points that might come forward to the commission when this comes up for a vote. But I'm not aware of any significant changes that we're proposing with the relationship. I would note that this, bringing this to the commission at this point really is probably the third or fourth step down the process. The way this worked was the US Department of Agriculture contacted Lisa and mentioned that in March of this year, the status of this program was going to be changing. And for people who might not remember back to 1970, when the city became the owner of that property, or at least the leassee for that property, all of the area where the Lakeview, the YMCA, and many parts of that area are actually owned by the city of Marquette with the proviso of a reverter clause from Northern Michigan University. So 1970, when Northern deeded the property to the city for a dollar, they said, "If you do anything with it other than what we're currently doing with it, with the Lakeview Arena, with the YMCA, if we decide we want to sell it, if we want to do anything else with the property, automatically it reverts to the ownership of Northern Michigan University." And so there's no initiative now to either try to do something else with it that would kick in that reverter clause, or to stop using it for its current purpose. And when Lisa, when Lisa went to the federal government, asked for this money, what they said was, "We can't give you money if there's a possibility that it's going to revert in ownership to some other party than you." And they... And they said rightly that if we're going to loan you the money for a certain period of time, then that reverter clause has to be null and void during that certain period of time. So, there was less discussion about the policy questions that you were raising in the process of bringing this forward. And really, we tried to approach this from a lease renewal so that they could secure their funding for the projects that you've, that you've heard about. If there's an interest in changing the terms of that lease or the terms of that agreement now, that would be something we'd really look for the commission to push forward. Because up until this point, it's really been mostly an administrative and legal function, just trying to enable them to meet the terms of the grant.
Well, I guess I, I'm drawing a blank from the budget session as far as a specific dollar amount, but I know, I mean, there are some costs involved. I don't know if Carl has those or if, if you could get those to me, but I'd like to know, you know, what those are. The other thing, we have two groups renting in Lakeview that were also charged a dollar per year, and now I believe they're being charged quite a bit more on their lease. And I've had those groups contact me and ask for some sort of fairness going forward. You know, and their argument is that they're doing great things too for our community. They're providing funding sources, they're, you know, granting money. And I didn't have an answer for them. And so, you know, I think they've got a fair, a fair argument. And part of this is, you know, how do we determine what the, what the leases are and what we pay who and who we charge what? You know, the other thing I'd like to know too, there, there are going to be some future capital improvements, certainly over the next 45 years. You know, the parking lot isn't looking too great, and I believe the city, unless there's hockey tournaments and that, I mean, we don't use half the parking lot. And a lot of this stuff, you know, is looking out 45 years, but I think these are important questions that we as a commission now, you know, might put on future generations. So, I guess now is the time to think about these things, and I hope I'm not the only commissioner, I guess, willing to bring this up and look at them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
First of all, I think the project is important and should go forward. I think it, you know, it's really important to the community. But I think, I think Commissioner Kembensee raises some good points. I might have hoped that as we extended this agreement, we might have taken the time to see if there were some improvements we could make in that basic lease to deal with some of these issues like the parking lot and, and, you know, how certain things, snow plowing is handled. Because I know the issue has come up before where, in discussions about the budgets and other items, the city has, at least some of those discussing have felt that, you know, these issues should have been addressed in the initial contract, and they were not. But I certainly don't want to stop this project, but I, but I do think this is something worth considering as, since, since these were, these were identified as kind of, you know, real questionable issues during some of our discussion. And if there was an opportunity to resolve those as, as we extend this contract, I think it would be beneficial. I guess the other point I'd like to make to the attorney is, apparently we, even though the, even though the sheet we received says we're supposed to consider a lease agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign, that's not the case tonight based on what you said before. So, we're just going to sit here and talk and then stop talking at some point and move on, I guess.
I think that's exactly right.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with both Commissioner Kembensee and Ryan. I think this is, this is a good point to, you know, when the formative stages of YMCA, certainly, I think it was probably appropriate to perhaps the city give the snow plowing. The rent, I'm not sure. I, you know, I think we give a long-term lease at very, very low cost, if any cost to the, the old chamber building. So, I think there's kind of precedent there. But I think this probably would be a good point for staff to discuss perhaps contribution to the, the snow plowing. It's a, it's probably a difficult thing to determine what snow plowing benefits the, the YMCA versus the arena, and probably what it would be is some sort of a contribution annually, you know, to defray snow plowing. But I think this is a great project. I'd certainly like to see it go forward. And I'm sure that, you know, by next, next meeting, some of these details could be worked out and perhaps maybe a change to the lease, and we could approve it and we can, we can go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'm going to make a motion. I think we have, my motion would be that we consider the lease today at this meeting for, and then consider it next, at the next meeting. To just talk about it isn't appropriate. So, I think that's, my motion would be to consider the lease, the first, regard it as a first reading for consideration at the next meeting. That's my motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. And I'd like to have the city manager correct me if I'm mistaken. What this lease is, it's extending it, the present lease, for five years. Is that correct? For how many years? Can I ask the city manager that?
Ten years, sir.
Ten years, okay. Not an additional 45 years. So, it's extending an existing lease that we have an agreement with the Y, whatever. That, and they need that, and they need that now in order to get the loan from the FDA. If they don't get that, they're not going to get the loan, and this whole project will get shut down. So, I think that needs to be very clearly stated. All the other issues, I agree, need to be discussed, but that's apples and oranges. This is a lease that's existing, and the reality is, we have to extend it 10 years for them to get a loan of $3 million to do this wonderful expansion. So, I don't have any problem discussing revamping the lease with them, but that's a different issue than this, I think. And the issues of other tenants, those other tenants are renting basically commercial space from, from the Lakeview and from the city. That's a little different. So, again, that's apples and oranges. But I really hope that we would vote to move this to the next meeting so we then can approve the lease at that time. And then if someone wants to make a motion later to renegotiate the lease, fine, but that's different, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I strongly endorse Commissioner Coyne's comments. I think he nailed it right on the head. We can sit here and talk all night, but that's not the purpose of what we should be doing. We have a motion, or rather, we have a recommendation. We have a lease in front of us. We can consider this to be a first reading. We pass that, we move on. And if there's an opportunity to further change the lease as stated, we can look at that, doing that too. But right now, it's, it's critical that these folks have the capability of doing the $3 million expansion that will benefit everybody. And I might add, they're doing that expansion with their money and not looking at any city money or city support beyond the extension of the lease by 10 years. So, I certainly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I don't quite agree with my two comrades. I think the, the issue is when you, when you, your opportunity to make changes in a lease come at a time when you're changing the lease or adding to the lease. Once you've approved this extension, you have no, you have no leverage at all. You have nothing. This, this is the opportunity, if there are shortcomings in the present lease, and I believe there are, to address them and move forward. And I don't think there are issues that are that difficult to, to deal with. And it's not just snow plowing. It is, it is the expense of that parking lot. We've talked about the fact that parking lot has to be replaced. Is that the city's parking lot, or is it the YMCA's parking lot? I just think we have to address these questions. And again, I want this to go forward. I want this to happen. I'm all in favor of it. I want, I want to extend the lease, but I think we should look and see if there's some ways we can approve the lease that was passed originally to address some issues that, to me, were not, were not addressed.
Commissioner Kembensee?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Ryan. Now is the time to take care of it. And I want the project to go through. I want the grant to go through. I commend everything they're doing. But as a city commissioner, as city commissioners, we have a responsibility, when we look at leases, to think about these things. There are things that have come up in the past, and now is the time to deal with them. So, I feel the same way. And I do have a few questions. One is, if we can't work on this for the next meeting, is there a deadline? Because I don't want the YMCA to miss a deadline. The second is, the YMCA needs an additional five years to the contract, and they're asking for 10. And I think that needs to be answered too. So, those are the two questions I would like answered tonight before I walk away or vote on anything.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Could I ask Lisa to come up and answer those questions? Could you come forward, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to ask you, what is the timeline that you absolutely must have this lease done to get it, to get the loan?
Right now, we are currently obligated with the federal government. We need to provide the documentation that they submit to legal in Chicago, and that needs to be done as soon as we can. Deadline, I don't have a date specifically. To break ground this year, it would probably have to be within the next month at the outside, otherwise we're not sure we'll meet within this funding cycle. So, and then we don't know that, the city of Marquette's no longer eligible for USDA. As you already know, the, we've passed the threshold. We're the last project to be able to move under that window. We had to have approval by March 23rd, and we received complete approval by March 21st. So, this is the end of funding, unless, of course, the city shrinks below $20,000 again, which all of us hope that that doesn't happen. But that is a possibility. I can't give you an exact date, which I could.
Do you have a date when the extremely low interest rate expires? They often do that.
We have, we've locked in an interest rate of 3.1.
To, till when?
I'd have to ask Jim, but I didn't anticipate that it would be an issue, so I didn't ask that question. I apologize. I can ask Jim what that would be. Jim Yoder is our rural development director for the Upper Peninsula that we work with on the project. I'd be happy to get the answer to that and provide that back to you. And I can get that to Bill tomorrow. The other question I believe that Sarah asked was, why were we asking for 10 years? Because the USDA requires a five additional years beyond the loan period. So, we have to have 10 years in order to be able to meet the requirement for USDA.
Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you. If I could switch questions then to the city manager. I have to, how I want to word this. Let's assume that it passes at the next meeting, the lease. What's your read on renegotiating the questions that have been raised now about snow plowing, parking lot, whatever, about renegotiating that in terms of, is it critical that we do that right now, or renegotiating it after we allegedly passed this extension? Does it seem to matter dealing, I mean, these aren't like sharks from Chicago. I mean, these are local people who are doing something really nice and reasonable.
I, I think certainly you can make arguments both ways, but they are, they are very nice people. I'll give you that, from Chicago. Just to step back for a moment, though, the, from a federal perspective, it was, it's been my experience, the way they would characterize this money is that it's committed. It's not obligated yet. They haven't paid the YMCA that, but it's committed for this purpose. Unfortunately, probably towards the end of August, if the money's not eminently getting ready to go out the door, it kind of goes back into the, the pot of things that agriculture might, might want to do otherwise. So, we have a window closing on this, and it was our intention, working with the board at the YMCA, to try to get this up before the Fourth of July holiday. Because after that, you're really kind of getting into the, the end game for the USDA's acquisition process.
Right.
So, that was the timeline we were working under. From the standpoint of negotiating with them, I think the YMCA's got the, got the very clear picture. Staff, of course, doesn't go out and initiate, hasn't gone out and initiated these issues because the, the view of the commission hadn't been known until tonight. And so, now that we understand what the issues are from the commission's perspective on the, on the existing lease, we can certainly open up negotiations now. And I don't think it would be, it would be something that the Y would be surprised by, but we don't have to make those linked into the action that they're asking us to take or otherwise contingent. They understand that the commission is looking to have those, those parts of the current lease re-looked at so there's maybe more equitable cost sharing, so.
If I...
You still have the floor.
I would like to just take issue with... Excuse me. I'd like to take issue with one thing that you said. The commission, so far, only two members of the commission have said this. This isn't the will of the commission as yet to renegotiate the lease. Let me finish. I want to ask back to Lisa a question. You want, do you want to start building as soon as possible, this building season?
We'd like to break ground in August so that this winter, we're prepared. If those of you that were members this last winter, there were a lot of folks who didn't come because we were so busy. So, we do need to break ground this...
And when would it be finished?
Probably by February, March. Hungestock, or Travis might give us a better deal on that, but I think that's when we'd hope to, by spring next year, completely done.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you. I only wanted to say I appreciate the clarification, and I apologize if I miscommunicated it. The will of the commission, in this particular case, I would hope would be a motion that would provide very specific guidance to the staff to go ahead and initiate that kind of negotiation with the YMCA. So, we're, we're listening to the dialogue, and hopefully we'll get clear guidance.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I, I'm certainly for renegotiating, and I guess I'd make a motion to direct staff to meet with the YMCA and negotiate, renegotiate the terms, the primary lease, the snow plowing, address perhaps future...
Pardon? There's already a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
Point of order. Commissioner Coyne?
I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the floor at this time.
Then I would ask that we call that question.
Any other commissioner with any further...
I'm not even sure what we're voting on because...
Commissioner Kembensee? City attorney?
I was just going to answer the question, and I was going to restate the motion, as I understood it, just make sure Commissioner Coyne agreed, but I think it was a motion to consider the lease as a first reading and move it to a second reading at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Commissioner Kembensee?
Maybe I can ask Commissioner Neme to kind of finish his, I guess, thought now that, or start, because I, I would certainly like the motion to just say that there will be another, another meeting to, you know, look at this and certainly the questions that many of us have raised.
I could probably make that motion after we, we deal with this motion.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I would hope you would support this motion so we can move the lease along, and I will support Commissioner Neme's motion to renegotiate the lease. But that's different than moving this along. I mean, than not doing anything, so. I would hope you'd support the motion to move it so we can at least act on it, yes or no, at the next meeting. And then if that motion, whatever happens to that, then I will support Commissioner Neme's motion. Makes it.
City clerk? Commissioner Ryan?
Well, again, I'd like to ask the attorney. I mean, it, it sounds like we're saying we're going to approve this lease for another reading, and then we're going to take a separate motion that says we're going to renegotiate the lease. I mean, they seem to be in conflict to me.
Well, we're not going to approve the lease. It's a motion to consider the lease as a first reading.
What does that mean?
It means what I tried to explain earlier. This is simply an introduction of the lease into the new charter. We can't authorize a lease at the first reading or at the time it's introduced. And this is the first time it's been introduced to this commission. This is, you can call it a first reading, you can call it consideration, you can call it whatever you want, but there's no motion to approve this lease. It's to consider it as a first reading and to move it to the next meeting for action as a second reading. That's how I read the charter. That's how the motion was made, as I understood it from Commissioner Coyne. And as someone else said, after that is done, then if there are other motions, the commission can take those in some kind of order.
With that, I'm going to ask the question. City clerk, could you kind of read back to us what Commissioner Coyne had... to us what Commissioner Coyne had motioned on?
Yes, Your Honor. It's a consideration of this as a first reading, and to be brought forward to the next meeting for a second reading.
Is that correct, Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Stonehouse, you agree with that? Okay. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to meet with YMCA and, and renegotiate the terms of the lease, the, the snow plowing, replacing the parking lot, and I'm not sure if there are other ones. Perhaps staff could, you know, you know, obviously has a sense of what we want to do. And if that cannot be ready for the next meeting, that, then a clause be inserted in the agreement that the parties will sit down and, and negotiate the terms if, if for some reason we can't get it done, but we can get the lease moving for the next meeting, one way or another.
It's the world's longest motion.
Support. Mr. Blue will, will shorten it up.
There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Coyne. City clerk, did you want to shorten that a little bit, or just read it directly back?
Let's see if I even have it here. Maybe very short. The motion by Commissioner Neme was to have staff meet with the Y staff to work on renegotiating the current lease with the YMCA for various aspects of the current lease, and that if that, if that is not completed in one week's time, that a clause be added that further negotiations on the lease will continue beyond that point.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Coyne, you agree?
Yep.
Thank you. I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Anything else?
We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I, since you didn't give us a chance for discussion on that motion, I would just like to add that I hope the city will, city staff will see this as a high priority, and that we will try to deal with this all in one piece.
Thank you. And they heard you on that. Thank you. With that, we'll move to agenda number 12. City clerk?
Your Honor, we, we never did cover unfinished business. I don't know if you.
Number seven?
Seven.
I just didn't want us to miss it. That was all.
Okay. Agenda number seven, Marquette City Aging Service Advisory Committee. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, at its May 28, 2013 meeting, the city commission approved the establishment of a Marquette City Aging Service Advisory Committee to represent the interests of seniors within the city of Marquette, and provide advice on short-term and long-term goals for the city of Marquette in regards to aging issues. The city manager recommends the establishment of an Aging Service Advisory Committee beginning August 1, 2013. The committee rules and procedures will be consistent with commission policy. The framework of this committee would include a five-member team, to include representation from senior, a senior housing organization, one member, a home care organization, one member, a healthcare organization, one member, and two members from citizens with interests in the aging population. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, proceed with the establishment of an Aging Service Advisory Committee as outlined by the city manager. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to proceed with the establishment of an Aging Service Advisory Committee as outlined by the city manager, with the addition of a sixth team member, and that would be the senior housing organization, a senior houser, housing organization, two home care organization, three healthcare organization, four the YMCA representative, and two city residents with an interest in the aging population.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'm glad to see this occur, and I, I woke up at about 4:30 this morning and was thinking about this, and I, I have a, why I added the Y is, the statistics they gave, they didn't include the fact that they serve 2,000 seniors, 500, or 700 of which live very close to the Y. And I think it, they, if you looked at their plans of expansion, they have really changed them dramatically to include a, quite a delivery system to aging people, and interestingly, a walkway, an elevated walkway for, for walking. And as one of the gentlemen stated in his recovery from cancer, and, and how that helped him improve, I think that that agency to be excluded would not be appropriate. So that's why I added that on. And, so I would hope you would support that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I support the motion, and I think Commissioner Coyne's addition is, is a welcomed addition. The only trepidation I have regarding this is, and I, I like the, the layout of the organizations, but sometime we, we run into problems fleshing out our, our committees, and by putting these requirements, I wonder if it might create some problem in the future, getting, you know, volunteers for doing it. But I guess we can now just cross that bridge when we get to it, if we get to it. So, I'm willing to support the motion. I appreciate Commissioner Coyne's suggestion.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I have the same concerns that Commissioner Neme raised, perhaps even a little stronger. I, I think there are two points. Number one, it kind of narrows the field of people you can draw upon, because a lot of these organizations, you know, have limited people willing to take on these assignments. Secondly, I'd, you know, I don't, I hope we don't set up a, you know, a committee that has a majority of young people and a couple of old people. You know, I mean, that's, that's kind of what it looks like, you know, to me. Now, that, there can be older people who are representing these organizations, but, and, you know, and I, I can see the value of, of spreading it out some, but, but to have all of the, to have four out of six positions pre-named, I'm, I'm not convinced it's a good idea. I'll support whatever the commission supports, but I guess I would have done it differently.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Two quick questions, if I can. One, I'm, I'm making the presumption that we are only appointing city residents to all positions, that we're not causing this as an ad hoc to go out. Okay. I, I share some fear about the, the folks that we're, we're kind of going to the well for because of the limited numbers, but I also understand that the effectiveness of them as individual committee numbers, members will be based on the, the expertise they can bring to bear. So I think that's really important, we try and focus on that. And if indeed, we can't get the people we need, as Commissioner Neme indicated, we'll have to make adjustments on it. But I support it certainly very strongly.
Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Combenzi?
Along the same lines, I, I was wondering if we wouldn't possibly add two more members on the very bottom, their city residents with, with an interest. I, I'm thinking about even along the lines of Quorum, or just things like that, but certainly that if we, you know, kind of leave it a little more open, there's a little more chance that we'll get maybe a few more members that can participate in it. I guess that's my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I, I appreciate those remarks, and this morning, I talked to representatives of the senior housing corporate organizations, home care, healthcare, and the Y. All of them are very interested and will serve. That solves the problem of our previous senior advisory committee, that if, that it was dysfunctional, because we couldn't get anybody to serve on it. These are people who are in the business of providing services to the health, to, to the aging population. We have two people, residents, who are interested. They can be anybody. And the problem, I, I did the math there. If you, if you had four, these three agencies and two people who were not professionals, you could easily get that, with five people, that's an immediate majority. You get two people who agree with one organization, and it's a real issue. And we saw that in the advisory committee. And this way, the way I set it up is, that you wouldn't have that majority instantly by two people siding with one organization. It would be, you'd have to get two organizations and two people. And that's why I think that has some merit to, to try. And if it doesn't work, there's no reason why we can't add five more city residents. But we ought to see how it works, and I think this more guarantees its continuity and its effectiveness, because the last one didn't work. So I, that's the reason I think that that's important.
Thank you. Commissioner Combenzi?
Can I just ask, I haven't had the chance to see how a new, I guess, committee forms. Do we get all of the applicants for, I mean, how does this, how does this work, I guess? Because this is a new committee coming out of nowhere.
Thank you. It'll work exactly the same way the other commission, excuse me, the other commission-appointed committees work. And so, we'll vet folks to make sure that they're residents of the city, that they aren't in jail, that they don't owe us any back taxes, or in somehow are, are rears to the city from a financial standpoint. And then it'll be passed to the commission for discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Along that same line, we form the committee. Does the committee form their, their mission statement and their agenda, or does the city commission say, this is what your charge is? And we don't have that down, no. If I could ask the city manager that.
We, we heard from the last commission deliberation that their charge was broad, that they are supposed to be providing advice on short, short and long-term goals for aging here in Marquette. And so that was really in the background statement, and again, it was in the, in the proposal for setting them up. If they're looking for a more specific mission, I would hope they would come back to you. They're, they're bound by the same commission bylaws that all other committees are bound. They're bound by Robert's rules like all other committees are bound. It would be my hope that as they organized, that they would come back and make a presentation to the commission, maybe explaining what they were, what they saw their mission as, what they saw their priorities are, and then allow the commission to maybe fine tune that.
Why I ask that is, if you're going to, you have a new committee, and you don't have any idea what they're doing other than the name, then why would you apply? I, the first question I would say is, what are we going to do, and what's our mission? So.
I think my sense from listening to the last commission meeting was, there's a very clear interest as a priority in seeing this committee take on the remaining dialogue about the senior center, and what should happen with that. I know, we didn't just randomly make this suggestion. We spoke with past members of the, of that ad hoc committee. We spoke with other members in the community who have been following these kind of services. And this was, this was the general structure we heard. But I, I concur. At some point, you can absolutely expect that that committee will come back and say, here's what we think our job is, here's what we think our priorities are, but here's, here's then what, the feedback we'd like to receive from the commission to make sure that we're not too far off point.
Well, I think what I'm asking then is a clear statement to people who are applying who, or do express interest, that this is the reason for your existence, and this is what you're going to be working on.
Any other commissioner at this time? With that, I'll ask the question. There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Neme, to recommendation of agenda number seven, and proceed with the establishment of Aging Service Advisor Committee as outlined by the city manager with the amendment of adding. To YMCA.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move to agenda number 12. Iron Ore Heritage Trail Land Use Order Resolution. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority is constructing and managing the Marquette West grade between the US 41 M-20 overhead bridge in the city of Marquette, and ending at the terminet of state ownership west of M-35 in the Gani Township. The authority has a lease with the state of Michigan to manage this portion of the state-owned rail corridor. The authority has received a $770,000 MDOT Transportation Enhancement grant, and a $400,000 DNR Trust Fund grant to construct the trail for non-motorized transportation. The authority requires a land use order from the DNR to restrict certain uses along the state-owned rail grade. The authority is requesting all municipalities along this section of the rail corridor to sign a resolution showing support for prohibiting all wheeled motorized vehicles and discharging of firearms or hunting on or from the grade. Once the land use order is in place, users who ignore the restrictions can be ticketed. The restrictions are consistent with the, with city ordinance. Fiscal effect none, no, there is no fiscal effect with approving the resolution. Recommendation, approve the resolution to request land use order of the director for Marquette West grade. Alternatives are as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the resolution to request the land use order of the director for, of Marquette West grade.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, the Heritage Trail, I think, has proven to be a great success. Will continue to grow, and it certainly deserves our support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I agree with that. It's good to see it moving forward.
Thank you. Any other commissioner wishing to address this? Agenda number 12. Seeing none, I'll ask the question. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept a recommendation of agenda number 12, and approve the resolution to request land use order of the director for Marquette West grade. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. City clerk, with that, I'd like to move to agenda number 10. Music in the Park.
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city commission has supported Music in the Park for three years through the promotional fund. The concert series is free to the public, experiencing high weekly attendance. All coordination has been voluntary. Excuse me. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee reviewed the program at their June 5, 2013 meeting, and made the following recommendation by motion. In light of the master plan that the city is embarking on this year, motion to support Music in the Park for the summer only of 2013, with the understanding that the license and liability insurance is covered by the city, and musicians will get paid a nominal fee by the city. Motion passed four to one with one abstention. By sponsoring the city program, the following will apply. Production requirements and limitations due to all applicable laws include program under the city liability insurance, include the program under the city music licenses, American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers, and Broadcast Music Incorporated licenses. Provide administrative marketing support through the Community Service and Arts and Culture Division. Remove the concert series from the FY 1314 promotional fund. Performers will not be paid. Fiscal effect. Remove $2,970 from the promotional fund for FY 1314. The FY 1213 and FY 1314 budgets do not include any compensation for performing artists with a series. There are 23 performer schedule. If the commission decides to compensate the performers, it would require a budget adjustment to both, both fiscal budgets, both fiscal year budgets. Recommendation, approve Music in the Park as a city of Marquette-sponsored program through the Arts and Culture Division for 2013. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Beauchamp. Thank you.
I'm Mike Beauchamp, 328 Harrison Street, again. I was at that meeting, and the general feeling, I think, was that it would be fair for this, it would. it would, that the Marquette city should compensate musicians for their services and that it would not be fair to ask them to perform for free. That was the feeling I got while I was there. They asked for nominal compensation, which is a little confusing to myself and probably all of you as well. So I sent out an email to everybody and said, "What do you guys think you should be paid?" You know, "What is normal to be paid?" I checked with the Ramada Inn. I checked with the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. And I have handouts, like I guess I always have when I come here. On these handouts are all the replies that I got from the musicians and also the Downtown Development Authority and all that. And the numbers are kind of all over the place. What I was seeing basically was anywhere from $20 a performance to $50 an hour. I guess it's not up to me to make a recommendation, but just for the, just for the purpose of argument, I took $25 an hour per performer. And if you do that, you end up with eighty-six performer hours, just a little math. Included in those eighty-six performer hours are $25 a performance for the sound people. I'm one of the sound people. Steve Martin, not the comedian, is the other sound person that we run these with. So you got eighty-six times twenty-five, you come out with $2,150. And of course, you'll all have to look at those figures to see what you think is fair, if you even consider reimbursing them. If you don't, it's my feeling the program will end at this point, or when you decide not to. Or if you do, then it will continue. I guess that's about all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
I guess, I personally think this is a great program. I think, you know, this is kind of what I see the charge of, you know, a city arts department, and that is to provide people like you who are willing to spearhead things like this, provide you a venue and work with you to make it happen. My question is, did you suggest the $25 an hour? Or do you feel pressured that you need to pay the artist or pay whoever? I mean, I'm trying to figure out where this is coming from. Not the number, but just...
Oh, where that feeling came from?
Right.
That was definitely the Arts and Culture Committee. That was their strong feeling, that we not ask artists to perform for free. They felt very strongly about that, and that's where that came from.
Okay. Because I, I'm getting hit by the visual artist saying, "When are you gonna start paying us?" And it's, it's interesting, but I'll leave it at that. But thank you for answering my question.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mr. Beauchamp, I was here when this program started, and I'm gonna say probably four years ago, I think. And I remember at that time, the pitch you made was the opportunity to use the band shell when it was not otherwise being used, to give or provide an opportunity to introduce young new talent to Marquette that otherwise had no other performance venue. And that there was never any mention of payment. There was never any mention of anything other than providing a space for young artists, bands just starting, musicians just starting, who had an opportunity or would have an opportunity to play in public perhaps for the very first time. And now I see it morphing into a program of more professional musicians that we are indeed being expected to pay for. So I'm scratching my head, and I'm saying, "We started with a program that was really kind of unique for youngsters to be able to get out and perform in public, and now we're morphing to a program at a much different professional level." And we started, I think, working with the folks at the Recreation Department, Parks and Rec, and now we've morphed over to the Arts and Culture Department. So I'm confused as to where the program, how we got here, and why we ever left where we started, where we were really working with the younger musicians.
Well, my answer to that, I guess, would be that the program has evolved. It started out very low-key, very low attended, and, you know, it's a little... And as it became more and more popular, more and more musicians were interested in playing. And, you know, when you had the more skilled musicians playing, it attracted more people because the quality of the performances increased. And, you know, there was no, there was no plan for this to happen. It was just a matter of evolution.
Your Honor, just a point of order here. First of all, we haven't suspended rules. And second, we're having a debate with someone at the lectern. Does the attorney see that as appropriate?
I don't see it necessarily as inappropriate, but we generally do suspend the rules before we engage in discussion on a topic that's before the commission, an agenda item.
And we generally don't debate with somebody at the lectern. I don't think we...
Certainly not during public comment, but during presentations.
We may ask them questions. Okay.
Commissioner Coyne?
I move we suspend the rules for further discussion.
Okay, I'll do that. There's a motion, suspend the rules on Agenda Number Ten for discussion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No, I just get the sense that people want to keep talking about it for a minute before they make a motion, so that's why I didn't...
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
I think Commissioner Ryan has a point, but in questioning a person at the lectern, you should go through the chair, not directly. You have to say, "Can I ask this person a question?" Otherwise, it gets totally out of control. So I know I try to do that, but sometimes I fail. I have a question I would like to direct to the city manager. If we were to agree to pay, reimburse artists, how does that work? Do we just give Mr. Beauchamp a bucket of money and say, "Here, do it"? Or what administrative problems does that cause?
Yeah. The proposal that we have, Mr. Beauchamp wouldn't be responsible for the program. Ms. Harris would run that. And certainly, we encourage and enjoy having community residents volunteer to help out. And I'm certain Ms. Harris would probably lean on Mr. Beauchamp for his experience. But this would be something as proposed that would be for this year only, run as a city program. The funding would have to come from fund balance at this point, or whatever savings we have at the end of the year. If there's money left over, we'd have to come back with a budget amendment to make it available for this year and for next year.
Well, then my next question is, who's running the program? Mr. Beauchamp or the Arts and Culture Director?
The Arts and Culture Director.
Okay, and I'm going to ask...
As proposed here.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the mayor a question if I could address him.
Just a point of order. Did we vote on the motion to suspend rules?
Yeah. We didn't?
Yeah.
No.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
No, we should go quickly.
I'll say aye. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Oppose. Motion passes six to zero.
I'm sorry, I'm in violation of the rules there. A question to Mr. Beauchamp. Are you comfortable with relinquishing control of this program? Because that's what's gonna happen.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I think the manager's made a very important point here. And I, you know, I feel totally more comfortable based on what he has said. And that's no reflection on Mr. Beauchamp, but for the city of Marquette to just kind of carte blanche, say, "Go out and run a program, and we're responsible, and we're giving you money, and we're providing licensing rights," you know, I don't think that's something we should do with anybody. But I think if it's being run through the Arts and Culture Committee and still involving you, then I think that makes a lot more sense. That's just a comment.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, actually, you know, I don't have any, I guess I don't have any qualms about this program really at all, other than, you know, the artists pay. And where do we, as commissioners, draw the line? I agree that artists should get paid. I have an art minor, an art education major. I strongly believe that. But what we're running into, what I'm seeing, is that we've paid musicians, and we've paid them quite well for one concert series. Now we've got this one, and it seems like there's an expectation to pay them. Like I said, the visual artists want to get paid, too. Now the city is into the business of paying artists, and where do we draw the line? To my fellow commissioners, I think this is what a city-run arts and culture center is. It's providing these opportunities and creating these partnerships so that there is a venue and that these things continue. I, you know, as far as using our music license or whatever, I think there should be strict rules as far as, you know, posting on YouTube, you know, and everything like that. But the actual licenses we have, I mean, it covers every commercial music played, I believe, unless there's something that someone has specific rights on. So to me, I see this as a wonderful thing. And I see more people going to this than the Thursday night series in the lower basement of the library. So I will definitely approve this. I'd like to see it continue into next year, and I know there will be more negotiations. But when this comes back, I will be supportive of it, so. And I would just like to thank you for your time and providing this for our community because a lot of people don't have the time to do this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to move we accept the recommendation of the manager and approve Music in the Park as a City of Marquette-sponsored program through the Arts and Cultural Division for 2013.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Well, I think, as I said before, some of my concerns were answered with the discussion that this will be operated in conjunction with the Arts and Culture Committee. I share the concerns of Commissioner Kambenzi about the city starting to pay artists for performing. And I think artists deserve to be paid. I'm not saying that, but I don't think that's, that's a place where the city commission should be, or the city of Marquette should be, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll support your recommendation with regrets. And that regret is the loss of innocence that occurred from the start of the program, where it was working with young bands, youth bands that had no other opportunity to perform in front of the public. And now we've gotten ourselves to the point that we're playing professional musicians. And I, not paying them, but trying to get to that level, and I just don't like that. I would prefer it if it was much more directed to kids, directed to young bands, to youth, with an opportunity to perform in public for the first time, than perhaps dealing with the ones we're dealing with now. But I certainly will support it as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Kambenzi?
Just along those lines that Commissioner Stonehouse was saying, I've received quite a bit of contact from either community members or certain members serving on committees. And I just want to say, I'm deeply disappointed in the unprofessionalism that's been displayed in describing their views of programs. And the fact that there seems to be this expectation of certain people that unless you are a professional, you shouldn't be playing music, and you should not be part of a city program. And I just want to say that I couldn't disagree more. And I think Fred brings up a good point, and I do hope that, you know, all sorts of types of musicians get to play and try their hand at this because I agree. I think the best part of this is that the city is embracing all people of all abilities that just want to play and listen to music. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I have a question for Commissioner Ryan. I'm gonna support your motion. Do you have any thoughts, you know, what do we do about the payment? I mean, this doesn't address that. Do you have any thoughts, if this motion passes, to proceed with the payment?
Well, this recommendation says performers will not be paid.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. There's a motion...
Since I was required to make that statement just now, let me see. I think musicians should be paid when they perform. I'm not against that, and I totally buy that idea. But this is a program that's been, you know, this started, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, we were asked to provide a bandstand. You know, that's really what it started out with, just to make the bandstand available. And now we're licensing music, we're doing all kinds of things. And I certainly am not against musicians being paid. I think they should be, but not through this program. Not if the city is going to be the sponsor of this program.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none, there's a... Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, again, I just want to reiterate that I think a partnership is what works. I think, you know, when people come and play at the auditorium, I don't require them to go out and get their own license and their own ASCAP and whatever fees. If they purchase the rights to a play that requires them to purchase that, they do. But as far as a general thing like a bar would provide or any other venue, when you buy that license, you know, it covers the songs played on your property. And so to me, that's why I personally don't think, you know, unless something's out of the ordinary, this is really a burden on the city beyond what we already carry. And I just, I guess I wanted to explain that more. And again, I think it's a partnership, not a city program, but I believe it's a true partnership.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything further? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Ten and approve Music in the Park as a City of Marquette-sponsored program through the Arts and Culture Division for 2013. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Did you need...
We're done, Mr. Beauchamp.
I guess...
You can return to your seat now. Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk? We're moving to Number Eight, amended development and reimbursement agreement, 857 West Washington Street. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, a brownfield plan was approved by the Marquette-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And it was the authority and the Marquette City Commission for the Veridia Project at 857 West Washington Street. And an Act 381 work plan for state tax capture was approved by the authority and the Michigan Strategic Fund for reimbursement of brownfield-eligible activities through the capture of increased taxes due to additional private investments. There were city public improvements with budget estimates that were included in the brownfield plan. Improvements to the Washington at Lincoln Intersection, $300,000 connections, and improvements to the bike path, $75,000 streetscaping along Washington Street and the bike path, $260,000. These projects will be coordinated with the private redevelopment and anticipated to be financed through either the city's capital improvement bond program or the authority. In order to meet the state's timeline for approval, the determination was made to execute the original agreement between Veridia and the authority and add the city at a future date. The amended agreement adds the city as a party to the agreement to receive reimbursement for the city's public improvements as brownfield-eligible activities. The portion of the authority's bond allocated to this project has first priority for reimbursement of the brownfield-captured taxes. Fiscal effect, the city will receive reimbursement for public improvements from brownfield-captured taxes derived from increased private investment on the Veridia Project with just less than half of the capture from state taxes. Recommendation, approve the amended development and reimbursement agreement for the Veridia Project at 857 West Washington Street. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the amended development and reimbursement agreement for the Veridia Project at 857 West Washington Street.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Kambenzi? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
I would consider this just tying up some loose ends... I would consider this just tying up some loose ends. We've all celebrated this project. We were there for the, many of us were there for the grand opening. This is just finalizing something that we agreed to before, and that is to enter into this agreement with the Veridia Project regarding some public improvements.
Thank you. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, I'd just like to echo that and also to say that this is probably one of the best examples of a brownfield and, you know, a public-private partnership I see coming forward. And I'd just like to thank the Brownfield Authority and Sherry Davy, who's here in the audience, for all their hard work, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion on this? Seeing none at this time? There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Kambenzi, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Eight and approve the amended development and reimbursement agreement for the Veridia Project at 857 West Washington Street. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. That will move to Agenda Number Nine, Market Little League Fee Relief. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, at the budget hearings and May 28, 2013 meeting, a representative of Market Little League requested the city commission consider fee relief for the current season. The league submitted their team and game count for 2013. Based on the data provided, the total invoice is $5,910. The league is requesting a 15% decrease in their fees or $910 reduction. The league has committed to allocating any reduction in fees toward improvements to the athletic facilities. Fiscal effect, the Community Service Parks and Recreation Fund will realize a revenue decrease of $910 for FY 1213. Recommendation, approve a fee relief of $910 to Market Little League for FY 2013. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve a fee relief of $910 to Market Little League for 2013.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I would have requested more if it were me, but they've requested $910, so I think we, I'm getting a signal maybe they didn't, but that's what it says in our, it says the league is committed allocating any reduction in fees toward improvement. The league is requesting a 15% decrease in their fees or a $910 deduction, so.
That's what we have.
That's what we're working from.
That's right.
I'm getting people shaking their head in the audience if that's why, that's why I'm looking a little confused here.
Yeah.
As I said, I think we charge Little League baseball and soccer too much as it is. You know, I think a lot of volunteers provide some great programs in our community, but I would certainly vote in support of this recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
I have no further comment, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Can I ask staff what, one, what they paid last year? I don't know if we have that on record.
It's approximately $7,900.
And I guess my last question is, is this amount, or I guess decrease, what was asked for by the organization? I mean, this is what they wanted, or is this?
Staff met with Mr. Andre last week to talk about what the maximum amount that they could pay and still make public improvements or make improvements to the facilities, and $5,000 is the maximum amount of what they could pay and still make some improvements.
Commissioner Kambenzi? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned because, you know, if this isn't, this has been put to us as the league is requesting a 15% decrease, and if that's not the way it is, I'm certainly not going to be happy about it. But I think a little history is important. Last year, in our budget sessions, the commission doubled the fee for Little League baseball and soccer, the field rental. Soccer came to us and complained, and I certainly supported their complaints, and so we rescinded their increase. But Little League baseball paid the full shot, and so they're still going to be charged at this, what I consider is a pretty high rate, so. But this is what we've been presented with tonight, so I certainly would support fee relief in this amount or more.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, I guess I want to echo Commissioner Ryan's, you know, concerns. I, you know, this is what was brought to us, and, you know, the only thing we have is an actual invoice, and so, you know, I guess it's what we're going by.
Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one question of the city manager's staff. Is this in line with what we're proposing ordinance number 604, our proposed ordinance 604?
Could you ask the question one more time? I apologize.
Is this in line with what we're proposing, proposed ordinance 604, the fee relief ordinance?
Yep, it'll be close.
Close?
Between the 10 and 20%.
Okay. So it's roughly a 15% increase, and we have 0, 10, 20% category, so this falls.
Yep. And then there's also some extenuating circumstances that gives the commission an additional 15% that they could provide relief to any of those organizations, depending on the conditions that is laid out in the ordinance.
Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none? There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Naimi, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Nine and approve a fee relief of $910 to Market Little League for 2013. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number 11, City Clerk, RFP 13-03, Custodial Services at Market City Hall.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, during recent contract negotiations with the City Hall Bargaining Unit, the parties agreed to allow the city to subcontract custodial services at City Hall only if the city could demonstrate financial savings and/or increased efficiency. Bid documents were advertised and sent to the Market Builders Exchange and 11 local contractors that perform custodial services. Three bidders responded. The proposals were open on April 5, 2013, and are summarized below. They're lined up by vendor, location, and bid amount as checked. CSM Services LLC of Hudsonville, Michigan had a bid of $45,964 per year. Final Touch Services of Marquette, Michigan had a bid of $54,900 per year, and ALS Cleaning Services of Marquette, Michigan had a bid of $57,000 per year. The proposals were analyzed, and staff determined that Final Touch Services Incorporated provided services that were in the best interest of the city. Staff met with the union representatives and provided them with a conservatively estimated savings of $20,000 over three years by contracting with Final Touch. The contract also provides for additional weekend cleaning in the police department. The union was unable to provide a lower-cost alternative utilizing union labor. The three-year contract will run from July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016. Fiscal effect, the FY 1314 operating budget allocated $56,724 in the general fund for custodial services and supplies at City Hall. Recommendation, award a three-year contract in an annual amount not to exceed $54,900 for custodial services at Marquette City Hall to Final Touch Services Incorporated of Marquette, Michigan, being the best bid contingent upon approval of the city attorney. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I gotta get back to my agenda here. I'll move that we award a three-year contract in an annual amount not to exceed $54,900 for custodial service at Marquette City Hall to Final Touch Services, Inc. of Marquette, Michigan, being the best bid contingent upon approval by the city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second the motion for, to move this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Naimi?
I have just one question. The, I like the idea that we're going with a local vendor. Is this, was this a sealed bid, or was this a request for proposals process?
I'd like to ask Superintendent Kambenzi to come up and explain the process.
It was put forward as bids for specific services. They were all sealed, turned at the same time, but it was bids for specific services.
And was there some, some things in CSM has a lower bid where there are some aspects their bid that were not responsive, or why, I guess, why aren't we?
The biggest concern was with how they proposed to manage the workforce that would be here. One of the things we requested is there be a full-time supervisor that would be overseeing them at that time.
Other commissioners got any questions for Mr. Kambenzi? Commissioner Coyne?
Would you clarify the last thing you said? They were unwilling to have a full-time supervisor up here? Is that?
Yes, basically, I mean, they're from, they're a downstate company. They're not doing a whole lot in the area, but it was my understanding that they would like to break into the area, and right now, they did not have it set up to provide that type of response or staff that we had requested.
Ryan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think we should ever receive something that says the proposals were analyzed and staff determined that Final Touch Services provided services that were in the best interest of the city. You know, that's kind of like a kid saying 'cause, you know. I think there's got to be because, and I think you've just explained some of the because, but I think it's, you know, it's helpful if we have that stuff because we don't know what that meant by just reading that one sentence.
There were about a dozen things or so that were listed that they would be evaluated on, and like I said, that was the biggest difference, just how they were going to be able to manage and supervise the crews that would be working.
Well, I think even just a little bit of that would have been, would have been helpful in this, in what we get, you know.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question, Mr. Kambenzi, if I can. One of the concerns I have with this, at least on its face, is that this previously was a union position, and that now we've taken it out of the bargaining unit and we've given it to a private enterprise. And I'm very curious to knowing how the union tended to look at that and whether we had the agreement of the union to be able to do that.
I was not part of the actual negotiating with that bargaining unit, but that was part of the collective bargaining agreement that they reached.
So you're effectively telling me, then, that that was part of the agreement and that the union is accepting of this move?
Well, I won't say they were excited about it, but they were accepting of it, yes.
Commissioner Coyne?
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Ryan's comments. As you can see, we're sitting here with hesitancy, not accepting a low bid, and we need that information. One, two, three, four, these are why we recommend this one. So in the future, that would be very helpful and prevent us from sitting here, kind of, like, how can we justify going with something that's, you know, lots more? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Just a few questions. What was the union position here? Was it a one full-time FTE? Was it one and a half? What did?
It was one full-time equivalent. When the proposal originally went out, what they had proposed, just because we were uncertain as to where bids would come back, there were some extra services that were requested. For example, the police department, which runs a 24/7 operation, had requested to have some time in there on weekends for just normal routine cleaning and that. Originally, the bids came back much higher. We pared down some of those services. We put it back out for bids. This is what came back in. We were still able to provide some additional services, such as the weekend service for the police department. Just to explain, maybe if I can explain the $20,000, that might help a little bit. The way the union contracts are typically set up is there's step increases that come over the first three years of employment. The first year, the actual savings on the contract is somewhere around $3,000. As those step increases kick in, the savings continues to escalate as you go down the road. So just as an example, that $20,000 will continue to increase the further you go down the road contracting the service out.
I guess one thing, did you look at two, you know, two part-time people for this position, unionized? I mean, were there other alternatives, or was it one full-time person or contracted?
It was compared to one full-time person. Currently, there's kind of a, there's two or three part-timers that are non-union working on it. I mean, that, those were, like I said, I wasn't part of the actual contract negotiations with that bargaining unit, but that's what was discussed during those negotiations.
Well, I, I'm not going to vote for this, and my reasons for not voting for it are several. And the first one is that it's a three-year contract, and I think that's a long time to enter into something like this when there really is no buy-in from the people doing it. They're not invested, and the public schools paid dearly when they tried this. And you can walk into a bathroom and see the difference. I have walked into the bathroom here, and I've seen a difference in the women's bathroom. And to me, $20,000 over three years is not a lot when you're investing in people that take care of a facility that is the face of the city. This is where people come to pay their bills and do their business, so I won't support it for that. Second, I think there are some hidden costs when you contract out services, and I think those costs fall on city supervisors. I think they fall on other custodians who are unionized, and I don't think those are, I don't think those are factored in here. The amount of work that the public schools had to do when those services were contracted out weighed heavily on the next level of support staff. And again, I just, I can't, I can't support this. I just, you know, I, for those reasons I've listed, I just think that, to me, it's not a good deal, and I would rather pay our union work a little more to have them invested to do a better job and relieve staff of having to oversee contracted companies than to sit here and worry about saving a little bit here and there. So I will not support this.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
Just a question on the point she raised. If we sign a three-year contract, do we have some outs?
Yes, you do. It's a three-year contract with a 10-day termination clause with cause or six months without cause.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Naimi?
Just have a question, Scott. Under this arrangement, there'll still be guys from your department coming in, doing HVAC and various, or HVAC might not be a good example, but various repairs and over and above this.
Repairs and maintenance will still be performed by public work staff. Really, what the custodian is responsible for is mainly just your daily cleaning, removing trash, dusting, things of that nature.
Yeah. In the budget, we've got listed $32,000 a year for a custodian. Is that, do you get to the $54,000 by adding on the? get to the $54,000 by adding on the fringe benefits, et cetera?
That's correct. You would add in the benefits at that point. And in addition to that, there's a portion of that is also with the way this contract was done. They're responsible for providing all of their cleaning chemicals, mops, vacuums, things of that nature.
Commissioner Kimbensey?
I guess one...I guess one more thing. I mean, there were a lot of things missing when we, you know, to provide your own cleaning supplies, there's always a running out of, there's always a borrowing. You know, and the other thing, you know, you can say that custodians are there just to clean, but when you have a custodian, they pick up the slack, they fix things, they move things, they do other things than clean. And this is one I'm gonna stand firm on in that I don't believe it should be contracted out. Thank you.
Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I just wanna say, and I'm kinda betwixt and between, to be honest with you on this, 'cause I do share some of the concerns that Commissioner Kimbensey has raised. I don't think a firm you bring in brings the same commitment as someone who works here every day. And I think it's probably more important in schools because you're dealing with kids and a lot of other things, so I'd have an even greater concern there, but it's not an easy decision for me.
I might just add that, you know, one of the real, you know, things behind this was just trying to, long-term, save the tax dollars that are coming in, save money for the city of Marquette. You know, we're doing this at a time when the previous custodian had retired. You've got a chance to see what the service is from this company. There's really not a lot of...how should I put it? Danger in the sense that if you're worried about if there's any slack, I mean, that's what you do have supervisors there to oversee what the contractor is doing. But on top of that, you know, if there is something that's missed or that, there are still staff available, you know, if there's a short-term need that can't be met by that contractor. And you do have the out clauses that are in there. So, I mean, if you look at it in the sense that you are not laying anybody off to go through this process, certainly if it's a process that does not work out, the option is always there to go back to a full-time employee.
Yeah, I think what you just said probably sold me. You know, I think the idea of trying it. And if we're gonna try it, this is the time to try it, so makes sense.
Anything further? Commissioner Ryan? Other commissioners? Well, that's...I'm not really comfortable with this, but one of the things, as long as I know that no city employee's gonna get laid off, and you've got plenty of work for the ones that were at the city hall doing custodial work, you have spots for them on the street or wherever to keep them busy.
Really, there's only two full-time custodian positions that were with the city. There is one for this building and one for the service center. This contract only covers this building you're in right now. It does not cover the service center.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Commissioner Naimi?
Why doesn't it cover the service center?
When we looked at this contract, we were not looking to displace any employees, and that was part of the CBA.
Okay.
Commissioners? I'll ask the question then. There's a motion by Commissioner Naimi, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number 11 and award a three-year contract in annual amount not to exceed $54,959 for custodial services at the Market City Hall to Final Touch Services, Inc. of Marquette, Michigan, being the best bid contingent upon approval by the city attorney. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
Name.
Motion passes five to one. Showing Commissioner Kimbensey voting no. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Number 13, Prescott Marina dredging change order. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background. At its March 11, 2013 meeting, the city commission awarded the Prescott Marina dredging Phase 1 project to Veet and Company for $477,959 to dredge approximately 15,000 cubic yards of sediment from the Marina basin and remove the South Pier system. In the course of removing the pier, the contractor encountered two unforeseen conditions. There was excessive reinforced concrete at the far end of the pier and six unanticipated concrete reinforced pilings. To remove the pier decking required an additional $5,218.75 due to requirements of additional equipment and labor. The pilings were...will require divers to cut the pilings off and then remove them. The additional cost for removing the six pilings is approximately $29,225. Both items are required to complete the project. MDNR Waterways has been contacted about the change order. The total amount of the change order is $34,443.75. The Prescott Marina Fund has budgeted $477,000 for FY1213. The city received a grant for 100% of the dredging expenses. The South Pier demolition was paid for with city funds. The change order is not covered by the grant and will require additional city funds. Fiscal effect, the change order will require a $34,443.75 budget adjustment to the Prescott Marina Fund. Recommendation, approve a change order and budget amendment for the Prescott Marina dredging project for a not-to-exceed amount of $34,443.75 for concrete and piling extraction, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve a change order and budget amendment for the Prescott Marina dredging project for a not-to-exceed amount of $34,443.75 for concrete and piling extraction.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
You know, this isn't the kind of news you like to get, but it's one of those things you can encounter when you're dealing in an area like a lake and you're doing a dredging project. And, you know, it's one of the reasons we, you know, we have funds available to take care of emergencies, and this is kind of one of those. If we're gonna do this project right, we have to pay the price. So it's not something that's...you enjoy doing, but it's necessary.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne? Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number 13 and approve a change order and budget amendment for the Prescott Marina dredging project for a not-to-exceed amount of $34,443.75 for the concrete and piling extraction. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. With that, we can move to public comment. Comment?
Item 15, Your Honor.
14 minutes?
14. Okay. City Clerk, number 14?
Yes, Your Honor. That was just item A from the agenda being moved from consent to consideration at this point. It's Agenda Item 14, and I think Commissioner Kimbensey has comments.
Commissioner Kimbensey?
Yeah, I just...I wanted more of my comments from the budget session. The two things I didn't support, the public relations position and the $25,000 incentive pay. I'd like those outlined pretty specifically as far as what I said during that, and I have forwarded them to our city clerk. I also have a copy, but I would like those specifically stated in there.
City Clerk?
That's not a problem, Your Honor. I think a motion to accept amendments with the recommended changes by Commissioner Kimbensey would be perfectly fine.
Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that we approve the minutes with the changes proposed by Commissioner Kimbensey.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi, anything further?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Any other commissioner on this? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. I think this would be the time for the mayor to ask. Commission rules of procedure requires the meeting to conclude by 10:00 PM unless extended by the commission. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
A motion to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Please state your name.
I'm Walt Lindela. I live at 437 McMillan in Marquette. I'm also coming here just for a couple of moments as the Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee for the city of Marquette. In terms of tonight's action, I'm just asking for protocol for the rereading of the motion. I think there was a little bit of confusion prior to the vote, at least it seemed like it. And do I need to check with you, Your Honor, or with the clerk? Or what do we need to do to get that sooner than waiting for published minutes?
City Attorney?
Do you want it reread now?
Well, if you could, I'd appreciate it. I'm trying to be expeditious, believe me.
Second. You don't read it without...
Yeah, you don't.
Without the mayor's authority, but it was clear to me what the motion was, to accept the recommendation. It was almost word for word from the recommendation.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm sure I'm going to be asked by some people. I just had a bit of confusion in how it went. So I can ask either at the discretion of the mayor or the commission after the meeting here, or whatever it is that, you know...
After the meeting, did you do that?
All right. And then, the only other thing I wanted to say was, since we are now in the process of getting a master plan going for arts and culture in the city, you can see some of the challenges that we are going to be coming across, because we certainly do believe in trying to support the artists, and we certainly try and support those that are up and coming and all of that. So as we are in this process now, thanks to the support from the commission on a line item that has kept us going with their...as, how should I say, expedited the process of getting this master planning done, we will be looking to all of you for input as well. And thoughts that I heard tonight were very good on that, but you also see the challenges therein of that, of prioritizing that. So I thank you for the support of the series this evening, although there may have been a little confusion on this old tired guy's part, but we'll get to the bottom of that. So thanks for the support of the series. Thanks for the support of the commission and the other series that we're doing as well. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. You're in Malankin at Marquette Drive. Just a personal bit of confusion on the Y, but just to give you a little bit of history, this is our 20th year for the golf outing. Twenty years ago, the Rotary Club of Marquette made a commitment of $100,000 to start funding the Y with the golf outing. And so we have...the organization has been doing that for the past 20 years. And subsequently, as we all know, the organization has generated millions of dollars to generate funds to have its existing building at this point in time. Now, I'm personally slightly confused. If it was in the consent agenda, it would have just passed without any further discussion, and the Y would be going with their funding procedures without any hesitation or question. But now being that it's out of there, there's a week or a delay of whatever length of time. However, the extended length of time was originally agreed upon. The additional length has become a point of, for lack of a better term, a maybe extortion of trying to renegotiate a lease that was agreed on prior to the extension of the time. And so everybody was happy and warm and fuzzy with the original agreement. Now, with the federal people wanting the extension time, now that has opened up a discussion on some of the warm fuzzies that you don't personally have right now, even though you had agreed on those warm fuzzies earlier. So what's the difference by just having the additional extension of time? That's what they're agreeing, or that's what the Funding Institute wants, is the additional time. And now you're wanting to add more to that mix, which makes it more difficult for the Y to gain their funding. They are in dire need of getting this funding at a really short period of time, and hopefully the consent agenda would have accomplished this. Now, this whole thing has become really, really complicated by adding additional wish list on the upcoming negotiations. And really, the basic was just to extend it by 10 years, and the original length of time was agreed on to begin with. So I'm personally just slightly confused, and maybe at your discussion, you can maybe somehow enlighten some of us on that. And 'cause the Y itself is much, much larger than any one of us put together or any one organization put together. And not giving them the courtesy of getting the $3 million plus to make this thing happen and saying, "Well, if we can't get to these stipulations, you'll lose your $3 million", and the entire community has lost. And so I hope that you guys can work it out and not put additional stipulations on the extended length of time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Harry Lang. Still own the property at 26 Elder Drive for the short term. But I would just like to kind of send out a plea to other people in the city who might have some expertise that could serve on some of these committees. I know I have enjoyed working on these committees, the Harbor Advisory Committee for many years, and the Traffic and Parking Committee. They all need the expertise of the citizens who go around and observe what's going on around their town and can provide some input. The other comment I would like to make, and this is just an observation, I'm certainly in favor and impressed with the Burita project over on the old Bunny Bread site. However, I did observe in going by the last couple of days, there seems to be quite an encroachment of the structure itself on the sidewalk and the space between the building and the street. And I see that happening more and more often throughout the city, where new construction happens and it migrates closer and closer to the sidewalk. There seems to be a narrowing of the setback between the curb and the structures that are going up, thereby reducing the space that the pedestrians can use walking down the sidewalk. Walking down Washington Street and having done that, even with that little bit of boulevard that's there, that's only three or four feet, three feet in some areas, it's kind of intimidating when you're walking along that sidewalk and the traffic's whizzing by you only six or eight feet away, and they're going more than 25 miles an hour, even though that's the posted speed limit. So I would suggest that, and I know this is probably something that really goes to the Planning Commission rather than the city commissions, but it's something that you folks might wanna keep in mind when you see these developments happening, that you provide a little more pedestrian space between the vehicles and the structures that are being put on the properties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Thank you. I know it's late. Thank you for the extension. I wanted to commend Carl Zugger and his staff for putting together, I think, a very nice draft for the ordinance that will be discussed, I believe, in two weeks. I would like you to consider, please, placing Marquette Little League in Category 1. That's...that provides a 30% discount as opposed to a Category 3, which provides a 10% discount. That would be our request. I know it kinda came and went, but that's maybe something we could bring back to have further discussions on in a couple of weeks when the ordinance, I believe, itself is coming up for discussion. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
My opinions. Big money influences threaten many people like me who look far and wide to reside in one of the few remaining low-key places, only to tan... Big money influences threaten many people like me who look far and wide to reside in one of the few remaining low-key places, only to tangle with the commission that wants to bring it all up here. Up goes the crime rate. Big money interests lead to the design of a loaded Hartwood committee to obtain the votes necessary to boost the number of developable acres. How else did two of the city's biggest developers get on the committee? Truth was stranger than fiction. Every action they took should be nullified. Ms. Compensy mentioned the possible need for a compromise on Hartwood, not reeling that we've already compromised on too many compromises. Mr. Schneider added that motorized summer use is not necessarily a bad thing, assumingly in reference to Hartwood. Engine noise tarnishes the experience for everyone else. The solitude is lost. Mr. Ryan refuses to address how three times he had Hartwood placed on the agenda at meeting time. Three times, the public had no opportunity to prepare comments. He was criticized the first two occasions, only to pull this nonsense a third time. He cared less about public notification. If you have something to add, contact the manager's office on Friday morning so it appears on the agenda. You people can't even get items of your own interest on the pre-printed agenda, such as Hartwood, pedestrian safety, and more. During your Hartwood discussion, no one chose to acknowledge the March 29, 2005 article that read, "About 350 acres may be sold and developed according to the city's March 17, 2005 press release." The current board clearly seeks to develop more than what the purchase called for. You're selective about what you mention and what you ignore, which is indicative of the same gutlessness as this two-minute time reduction. March 28, Mr. Ryan snickered when I told him here that he's being challenged like never before. Someone who claimed to know him had told me that Mr. Ryan is used to getting his way, and that he's never been challenged. So whatever little challenge he's receiving now is more than nothing. I promise that people at home are applauding that someone is finally outwardly opposing him. They can vividly imagine Mr. Ryan snickering at me like he's the big shot and I'm nobody. He's a mirror image of the Urbys and the Bradleys before him, who donned that same reek of pompousness until the bottoms fell out from under them. Your other challenge is to show that I'm doling out undue criticism, and I'll stop appearing. Simply obtain the files of your chosen items, check the dates, and view the comments. Easy as pie. Of course, you wouldn't dare. You're well aware that your every rebuttal, for every rebuttal, you receive three minutes of greater detail at the next meeting. This explains why all seven of you habitually answer with silence, an extreme lack of guts which is ingrained into the very fabric of this commission. If you can't show that my comments are generally off-base by now, then the allegations have merit. Let us delve into the specifics.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just take a quick second. I want to thank you for giving the Y an opportunity to serve on the senior committee. I think that it is a good representation of the folks that we have at the Y and the number of seniors that we have, so I appreciate that opportunity. The other thing is I look forward to working with the city as we go and open a lease, I guess, back up. But there's a number of things that I need to also make sure that the commission's aware of, and Bill and I can talk, or other city staff, about that. The YMCA provides certificate of insurances for most community events that happen, because no one else is willing to do that, and our insurance will allow them to do that. So when you have events that come to the community, we are asked to do that, and we have many times, including the bike races, you know, a lot of the different pieces that happen that you may, as commissioners, not be aware of. Elections that are held at the YMCA, we have a great agreement with the city, and that works very well reciprocally. We happen to be the first aid station, and I don't want to admit this, and any problem solvers that happens with the two skate parks now. And in the last few weeks, I think the city has had a number of calls, and we get folks at our door routinely. When the storm hit a couple of weeks ago, there was about 34 kids in our front lobby, trying to keep them occupied with what we could do that was productive. The membership for the YMCA, the city as a partner, anyone who works within the city does not have to pay that $75 joining fee. That's a value that the city commission and city members can receive. And then the Y, you know, we talk about a community center, and what a community center is, and I really think that the City of Marquette has a great community center, and I think it's the YMCA. And we're here to serve, and we're here to partner and work with the city. So I look forward to sitting down and discussing some issues with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? See none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Coyne.
Thank you. I just want to address Mr. Lincoln and his concerns. It's my understanding that the agreement for the lease has to be dealt with on two sessions, this one and the next one. So the fact that it was removed from the consent agenda did not in any way delay dealing with the lease. So I think that was a misunderstanding that you had. Also, I don't think we're extortion, extorting the Y. We are simply, I think the points that were raised were good business practices, to take an opportunity when things are changing to have a conversation, and I think, based on Ms. Coombs' comments, I don't see her reacting as we're extorting her. It's just simply good business practice to look at the issues that the city is responsible for, and I hope that she does not feel we're extorting her at all. And the motion that Commissioner Neme made, really, I think, handles the issue of if, to hasten the lease being closed, so, but still allowing negotiations to go on with, if we can't accommodate that by the next meeting. Just a brief comment about the work session we had this week with the Brownfield Authority. It was highly valuable. I learned a lot, and I think everyone did, and particularly the great respect that I have developed for the members of the Brownfield, how hard they're working, their knowledge, their commitment to the city. Also, they've hired an excellent executive director, and have had great consultants helping them. And I think, just a message to community members, prior to the meeting, actually on the day of the meeting, I got two phone calls, and I gave them profound misinformation. So I had to call them back after the meeting and say, "Now, I'm a little smarter, and I'd like to correct what I said." In particular, if people who have projects that they're having in mind, probably shouldn't call the city commissioners, per se. They should call Sherri Davies, who is the executive director of the Brownfield Authority, and she will talk with them, give them the application, work through them, and then deal with the Brownfield Authority group. So that's really the appropriate way for people to deal with that. The city commission then has to deal with it when the application is completed, but we don't do that. And there's a misperception that the Brownfield Authority has a lot of money, and that's not the case. They, this is a thing they need to sit down and individually talk with the Brownfield Authority. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll try to make this short, but just again to reemphasize that I support the Y's project going forward. I want to see it happen. That's not the issue. My first responsibility is to the City of Marquette taxpayers. And this is not a matter of, now that the Y is going ahead, things were okay before, and now they're not. I sat through several budget sessions where we've talked about the fact that Lakeview Arena is one of the biggest losing propositions we have in the City of Marquette financially. And, but it provides other benefits, and the citizens enjoy it, so, you know, we do our best to keep it going. But there are issues like the parking lot will deteriorate. There are issues like snow plowing. There are issues that weren't addressed in the first lease, and that's all I'm suggesting. It doesn't mean that we're going to ask the Y to even necessarily do anything, but to sit down and talk about these issues, and find out if there are some good answers to them. Because I don't think the Y wants a lousy parking lot either. You know, I think, you know, I think everybody wants a good parking lot out there. So it's just a matter of, when you open a lease, you know, it's a good time to say, "Well, there are some issues that we might talk about," and see if we can agree to deal with them in a positive way for both the city and for the YMCA, so. Apart from that, I agree with Commissioner Coyne. I think it was a good session with the Brownfield, Brownfield Group, and I think it's going to be very positive going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just one, one short issue, if I can. We had a pretty good weekend, I think, with weather, and it was great to see people out on the bike path and moving around and enjoying the lakeshore. And I'd like to remind people, too, that in Marquette, we, generally speaking, own our lakeshore. And I would particularly address the area around Founder's Landing, because that's the doest part of our lakeshore. And remember that everything on the lakeside of the road, with the exception of kind of where the hotel bumpout is, is all public parkland, and thoroughly open for people to be able to go down and enjoy the water, to park their cars in those parking lots and cutouts we made along the lake, along the road. Those are not private. They don't belong to the condo association. They don't belong to anybody but the residents of Marquette. So please, those are public parking places. Use them to get out and be able to enjoy the lake. And even down where the hotel is, too, you'll notice the wooden boardwalk there. That's City of Marquette boardwalk in public. And likewise, the bike path that goes between the boardwalk and the hotel is also public bike path. We own 44-foot of land, in effect, from the water up to the front of the hotel. And that was very purposely done to assure and to allow the public full access to its own water and its own harbor. So as you're out and about, just remember, those are places you can go. Those are places you should be going and enjoying, and really, you know, being, being part of what I think is so very great to be here in Marquette. Other than that, please be safe and enjoy yourself this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Combenzi?
Well, I'll just start off by saying, first of all, you know, thanking Mike and Walt for being here, and just, you know, I guess my feeling on the Arts and Culture Center, and really what, you know, the city's role is, and that is of a local arts agency, and how to help artists, you know, solve their problems, support them, you know, and make this a great community for all artists. And I think that we're getting there. I'm excited for the strategic plan. I'm excited to see all the arts groups come together and work on it, because I think right now, we're all off kind of doing our own thing, so I really look forward to that. The second thing, the Father Marquette statue and the vandalism that's occurred is really disheartening to me. And I guess I'd like to ask the community to step up a little bit and report some of these things they see going on. I know I've talked to several people that say, you know, they drive, drive past and see people out at 3:00 in the morning, you know, in the Lower Harbor, doing something. But, I mean, I think it's up to all of us to say enough, and that this is a community treasure, and we're not going to get another statue like this. This is our only public piece of art that we own. And I would like the city to actually do some homework and see what it's worth, and to make sure that it is insured, you know, at that rate. As for the YMCA, I think you've got a city commission and city staff that are fully supportive. You know, and what you saw tonight, certainly I would categorize as business housekeeping. I think, to reiterate what Commissioner Coyne said, I think Commissioner Neme has, has put forth a good idea to helping us solve those issues, because as much as we think many things are great and stand behind those, we still are responsible to you, the community and taxpayers, you know, to make sure that we're keeping everything intact as far as the finances. And lastly, I guess I'd just like to mention the Hartwood. I think I've heard some great ideas coming forward with land preservation, and how to go about that, and even get some reimbursements back to the city. I think the Rec Authority is preparing a great plan that they're going to bring forward, and from what I've seen so far on that plan, I think there's even more we can preserve. But certainly, you know, the Hartwood is going to be of some mixed use. I don't think that it's all going to be preserved. I think that there will have to be some compromise, and though I'm for the majority of it being preserved, I do think, you know, we need to move forward. And I'd like to see the commission really take a good look at the red and purple areas, so that when all of this comes together, we can work with the Rec Authority, and work on capturing some state funding to preserve some land, so I guess that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Combenzi. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to remind people about one, one resource the city's provided you is the minutes online through the archives at NMU, and it's very interesting. I've been looking at some of those recently, and, and just to let my fellow commissioners know, we, we extend after 10 o'clock. I remember one year, I can't remember what year it was, maybe the early 80s, the, most of the meetings were after midnight, 11:45, 12, you know, 12:15 AM, and the minority were ended before 10 o'clock, so we're not doing so badly. And I'll end at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme. And at this time, I'd like to thank the Kiwanua Bay Indian Community for receiving payment in part of 2% distribution from our Marquette-Ojibwa Two Casino. And they enclosed a check to the city market for $46,700. For, there was seven different places, NMU, Center for Native American Studies, Great Lakes Recovery Center, Women's Center, Crisis Intervention Service, NMU Native American Student Association, Beacon House, Lake Superior Hospice. But one of the things that I really liked was the fire department received $7,500 for 500 more smoke detectors for the residents of Marquette. And this would not have been possible without the 2% distribution from the Kiwanua Bay Indian Community and Marquette-Ojibwa Two Casino. So again, we thank you very much for doing that. And last Saturday, around 12:30 PM, Officer Roth, I'm going with this as a very positive thing about him doing a duck patrol, because the media had given it so much attention, but there was a hazardous to the traffic. A lot of the citizens were very concerned when the mother had 12 of her chickadees following her down the middle of the street, going wherever she felt where she wanted to go. And with the help of the citizens of Marquette, they were able to round them up, move them from Park Cemetery to Lower Harbor. So again, that was a unique job. I only wish that our COP, Mike Angeli, had that chore that day. No pun intended. And also, with the utility billing, now that they got the cycle down to right around 28 days, the complaints that we're getting from residents were, when it was up around 44, 45 days, is now corrected, and they got meters, readers out there, working steady at full speed ahead, so they're trying to keep it within the 28, 29-day meter reading, so the people will at least feel comfortable knowing that they're going to be pretty much at that, that amount of days. So thanks again to Utility Billing Department for getting everything back on track. And then tomorrow at noon, the city and Light and Power and other agencies involved, there'll be a ribbon cutting at the tourist park, beach reopening. And it's, this is going to be at noon, because everybody's been waiting for 10 years. We got the OK from the DNR, DEQ, EPA, Army Corps of Engineer, that the water is now safe to go out and swim, and the fish are now coming back into that area. Boat ramps will be in place. We got lifeguard station, and all the good stuff with school now out. So with warmer weather on the way, we hope that everybody gets to enjoy some swimming there. And one of the things is that if anybody's in the area, the public, they're more than welcome to come to the ribbon cutting tomorrow at noon at the tourist park. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Market City Manager for his community office hours, date, time, location. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I only have one other thing to add besides that. With the, the weather heating up, with all of the people in town to enjoy the beaches, and with everybody glad that winter's passed, I'd just like to remind everybody to be safe and to know their limits. We want everybody to have a lot of fun, and we want them not to put themselves at any other risk, or the risk that they might put others, who might have to come out and respond to them. You might have seen some of the reporting. We've had some early missteps by people who might have overestimated their capacity. That's always going to happen, but we just would like to caution people to please have fun, but please be mindful of your limits. The other thing, Marquette Community Office- The other thing, Marquette Community Office Hours this week will be 10 to 12 at Peter White Public Library on Wednesday, the 12th. And we look forward to seeing everybody who's got suggestions on how to make Marquette even better. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.